Sorry, it's six o'clock. And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody Council meeting, City Council meeting to order. Councilman Laughton Bucker, you have the invocation and the pledge, please, for us today.
Thank you, Mayor. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief Grogan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce you to one of our newest officers, Abu Bakar Savage. Abu joined us from the DeKalb County Police Department where he was employed as a police officer since 2019. He previously worked in corrections with the Juvenile Justice Commission in New Jersey. He has a undergraduate degree, a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from King University, and a master of science degree in criminal justice from New Jersey City University. We're excited to have him on our team. And we got to bowl yesterday in a charity bowling tournament. Dunwoody Police Department had a team, and so he is one of our bowlers. We didn't quite win the trophy, but we tried. Anyways, we're happy to have him on our team.
Savage? We solemnly swear and affirm that We solemnly swear and affirm that We will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Georgia. Constitution of the State of Georgia. The Charter ordinance of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia. Charter ordinance of the City of Dunwoody, Georgia. I am not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. Not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States. Not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States. Any other state. Any other state. Or any foreign state which I am. Or any foreign state which I am. By the law of the State of Georgia prohibited or called. By the law of the State of Georgia prohibited or called. I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a police officer. I am otherwise qualified to hold the office of a police officer. According to the Constitution and laws of the United States, according to the State of Georgia. According to the Constitution and law of the State of Georgia. I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies. I will faithfully follow the legal rules, regulations, policies. And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the City of Dunwoody, Georgia. And procedures of the Dunwoody Police Department and the City of Georgia. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Don't leave yet.
Officer Savage, we are so grateful that you have chosen our community to be your home, and we hope we really will become your home. And this is, we're part of your family now, and our community is eager to show you how they support our Dunwoody Police Department. So once again, thank you so much. Congratulations. Next is public comments. I have cards here. I'm about to have another one, it looks like. Michael Healy, if you'll just approach the microphone, and you'll have three minutes. Just introduce yourself if you'd like, and three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Michael Healy. I live in Kingsley subdivision. I'm commenting on hunting in, especially bow hunting in Dunwoody. I just don't feel that, living in a neighborhood that has elementary schools and bow hunting allowed during the day, it's just unsafe for children and people walking dogs, people out exercising. You know, if you shoot an animal and it goes and it starts running away from you, you're, there's a chance that that animal can end up hurting somebody rather than just the bow. I'm just saying it's kind of archaic in this time of day that we actually have to have some sort of laws against, you know, bow hunting in a municipality that is so close to Atlanta. I just, I understand what state law says. I understand what the county law says. You know, I just, I hope no one has to go through or the pain of seeing an animal die and suffer in their front yard because somebody shot it with a bow and that was dead. And now, you know, have to burden our new officer with a, with having the police come out and take care of this. Either if Dunwoody has a game warden or something to take care of, some division of that, that might be an option. But I just, I really wish that our law could be, this law could be changed. And if I could use any help, or if you guys needed any help, I'll do as much research as I can to get this changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
Hi, I'll try and go through several topics as quickly as I can. For those of you that did not attend, our Barry Dunn consultants for the Police Department last week, Councilman Hennington was able to show up for some of it, but there were 10 people from the city who showed up. And my biggest takeaway is that the consultants, which are supposed to be making recommendations for the city, do not care why more than 30 officers have left the department in the last two and a half years. The consultants say they do not care why 30 officers have left. They're not going to read any exit interviews. They're not going to talk to any police officers. They're not going to make any personnel decisions. They don't care that it costs about $50,000 per new hire to train them. Just thought you should know what kind of garbage you're going to be getting after you spend $115,000 on this. Next topic. Last week, I meant, last two weeks ago, I mentioned that Ginger LaPage and Sharon Lowery should perhaps be criminally charged for lying to me and violating the Open Records Act request. I found it interesting that our city manager, who himself is a big violator of the Open Records Act, did not reach out or express any interest to find out what they did or find out any details. And it was also disappointing and noteworthy that Councilman Laughton Bucker, when she rewrote our new mission statement, our city no longer says that we are transparent. That was dropped from our mission statement. Bad timing. Next topic. Coming up in a few minutes, you'll be hearing from Code Enforcement Shane Peoples, discussing our priorities and what we do and do not enforce in the city. And as I tell you any day, I can go out and find 100 sign code violations in one day. Just, I will do it if anyone wants me to, but they've not asked, and they don't do it because Shane doesn't even return messages, return phone calls. He doesn't respond to people. I thought we were complaint-driven code enforcement, but we're not because Shane doesn't reply. It's also interesting to note that, you know, everyone is seeing on Mount Vernon, the new Chipotle coming, it's exciting, but there's been a huge banner there for six weeks. It says now hiring, strung between two trees. Everyone knows that's 100% illegal. Code enforcement drives by it every single day, but they don't bother to take five minutes to get out of their car and do anything about it. There's a church that has, are now enrolling signup with those permit sticker that's supposed to last two weeks. Big on Shambly Dunwoody. They drive by it every day. It's been up there for 12 weeks. Not a priority. It looks like it's selective enforcement. Of noteworthy, when y'all rewrote the sign code with another, it says anything that draws the attention and directed to be viewed from an outdoor space. That will include all holiday displays, whether it's Rudolph, Frosty. I made a complaint about some Halloween decorations. No one from the city replied to me. Just so you know, if there's more than four signs in a neighborhood, it's a violation, per house, it's a violation.
Thank you. Julie Weiser.
Hi, as you heard, I'm Julie Weiser, and later tonight you will be voting on the American Rescue Plan Grant. We, the members of Temple Emmanuel synagogue have applied for this grant. We use this grant to serve, we are participating in Metro Atlanta's Backpack Buddy Program. And if you're unfamiliar with Backpack Buddies of Metro Atlanta, it provides food for insecure children, and food insecure families and children. We serve three schools in DeKalb County. We serve students at Chestnut Elementary, Peachtree Middle, and High Tower Elementary. So this grant provides us with enabling to serve more children. It is our mission in our synagogue to serve every child and anybody here in our community, right in our backyard. The food is backpacked by our volunteers in our synagogue each weekend and delivered to the elementary schools. These children have been identified by their guidance counselor. Our food provides them with both breakfast and lunch for Saturday and Sunday morning. It's a nutritionally dense meal, but yet it's kid-friendly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Dallin.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. With me is Mickey Robinson. I just want to say that we're here from the Coward Astronomical Y M C A. And Mickey serves as the Executive Director, and I've been on the board now for, I think, over 10 years. I'm not exactly sure. I can't count that large. I just want to say thank you for considering our grant request under the A R P, and just say we really appreciate that. Thank you. That's two in one.
That's awesome. Thank you. That completes public comment. For this section of the meeting, we'll have a second section of public comment at the end of the meeting. If anyone has anything else to say, we welcome you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add an additional period of City Council comment prior to the reports and presentations.
Second. Any discussion about this motion? See, John, or questions?
I'm just unsure of what it is. A City Council comment on what is it? I'm unsure of what it is. I'm not sure what I'm voting on besides.
Well, in essence, we have a City Council comment period at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
But as we all know, usually it's just us left in the meeting.
Got it.
Do you want to make some comments that I wanted to make sure, at least, at least there were a few people in the room to hear?
That makes more sense to me. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Go ahead. Well, so I'll just go down the road, and I'll start with Tom, since it was his motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Council, for accommodating my request. There's been a lot of public discussion over the past several months about trails. The ability to discuss and deliberate public projects and policy is a cornerstone of our republic and something I both respect and embrace. Having an open mind and being willing to not only listen to, but genuinely value and accept opinions that may differ from your own is how we all learn and grow, and it helps me to be a more effective leader in my service to the city. But author Robert Brass stated that healthy debate occurs when people can agree that they have differences of opinions, not differences in facts. And that is really what I want to address tonight. There's been a growing level of misinformation being presented to the public, and this is concerning to me. Opinion is at times being represented as truth, and in some extreme cases, reality is being exaggerated or even misrepresented. To have unfair and productive community discussion, it is critical to establish a common baseline of facts. To be clear, I'm not going to go down a bullet point list of statements, misrepresentations, or misinformation. I don't believe that this is the appropriate form to do that, and I also don't think it would be fair and productive to call out individuals or groups of that without giving them the opportunity to respond. Instead, I'll focus on some of the overarching sentiment that I believe has driven much of the public conversation to this point and needs to be clarified. So let me begin with some of the most basic and common questions and statements we have heard, such as why are we even building trails in the first place, or the blanket statement that nobody wants these trails. To get clarity on these points of view, we need to look no further than Dunwoody's master plans. What are these plans? The Atlanta Regional Commission effectively summarized comprehensive plans as follows. Great places don't happen by accident. Local governments must plan carefully and work with residents to identify a vision for their community and develop a framework to guide future development. The Georgia Planning Act requires that cities and counties maintain comprehensive plans that help shape the future growth. These plans generally recognize the physical, economic, social, political, and aesthetic factions, factors of a community, and are developed in a process that includes intensive analysis and robust public engagement. A comprehensive plan typically includes a long range scope and provides the overall guiding principles for a community's growth and development. Some of these plans were created quite deliberately, with the process to complete individual plans ranging anywhere from nine months to two years. Most importantly, a multifaceted approach to public engagement was employed, ranging from sounding boards to committees to public surveys to one-on-one interviews to public meetings to open houses, all capped off with multiple reads at our City Council meeting before formally being adopted. I believe it would be, it would be an irresponsible waste of time, talent, and resources invested into developing these plans to simply leave them sitting on a figurative shelf. And it would be an enormous disservice to all of our residents, especially those that participated in these planning processes if we chose to ignore their input. In my opinion, planning for the sake of planning, or to simply check a box to say we have a plan, is pretty worthless. The true value of a plan is not in its creation, but in its execution. I think Thomas Edison said it best when he stated, having a vision for what you want is not enough. Vision without execution is hallucination. Well, I have no delusions. I have read our city's master plans, and one consistent message resonates clearly through them all, the desire and the need for trails. It really doesn't matter which plan you choose, the comprehensive plan, the transportation plan, the parks' master plan, the Dunwoody Village Plan, the Georgetown Plan, the Urban Redevelopment Plan, the Sustainability Plan, heck, even the Arts and Culture Master Plan. Only will permit the strong community desire for trails throughout the city, and the recommendation that the city prioritize building a connected trail network. And by the way, all of these plans are available for review at any time on the city website. Simply click on the Government tab and then select Master Plans. For example, Dunwoody's Park and Recreation Master Plan identifies there is a need for more connections with pathways and trailways, and indicated on the priority list of recommendations to continue to develop pathway sidewalks, bike ways, and expand to connect neighborhoods and parks. On a particular survey question that asked what should be a top priority for future investment, pathways and trails received the highest number of responses. The city's transportation plan indicates that the strong desire to create a community-wide pedestrian and bicycle network. One of the community survey questions asked which bicycling and walking investments would you like to see in Dunwoody? The top vote getter was multi-use trails with a 75% response rate. Another question specifically asked, which pedestrian facility type would you support to be constructed on main roads? Wideside paths and trails was by far the top vote getter, outscoring sidewalks by more than a two-to-one margin. I believe the master transportation plan also helps answer the Public Works Department, why the Public Works Department is working on these specific trails that we have now. One survey question asked to rate the five new bike pedestrian projects from most important to least important. By far, the highest rated was the Tilly Mill Multi-Use Trail from Womack to Mount Vernon, with 89% of respondents ranking it in the top, as the top or second rated project. Ranking second, with 58% of respondents ranking it either one or two, was the Peeler Road Multi-Use Trail from Winters Chapel to North Peachtree. And just for the record, nowhere in the master transportation plan does it indicate a recommendation for the Tilly Mill Trail to go on any particular side of the road. And Dunwoody's comprehensive plan, the primary vision shaping document for Dunwoody's next 20 years, stated that input received in the 2020 plan update process revealed a clear desire to continue enhancing and upgrading the city's bike pedestrian network. It states that the city's right-of-way are assets to maintain and improve, and that many of the city's right-of-ways also lack complete sidewalks or bike facilities. And though the city has made ongoing improvements, more needs to be done to help ensure greater transportation safety. One of the stated goals of the transportation plan is expand the city's trail network by constructing new trails and greenways with the goal of creating a community-wide pedestrian bike path network. Speaking of plans, you may have noticed one master plan I did not mention, and that is a plan specifically for trails. I hope most people know that plan is currently being developed for Dunwoody by the PATH Foundation. Some question, why were you even developing a master trail plan? But to me, the more appropriate question is why has it taken us so long to create a master trail plan? When something is consistently ranked among the top requested amenities by your residents, and when it appears as an identified goal or priority in every city plan, well, I believe we have a responsibility to make that a reality. But simply calling something a priority doesn't make it such. We need to have a clearly defined vision and a plan to implement it. And I'm hopeful that this process will more clearly define our residents' desires and expectations when it comes to trails. Create a clear vision for a citywide trail network. Alleviate common but unwarranted concerns regarding trails. Answer any lingering questions the public may have, and provide us a strategy for implementation. Another comment I have heard stated by several people is that nobody from the city is listening to us, or nobody from City Council has responded to me. I take personal exception to these comments because I have gone above the call of duty to ensure everyone has been heard. Regarding these specific trail projects, I have personally responded to every email and phone call I have received. I have offered to make myself available to anyone that wanted to meet with me. I have met with groups of people and individuals. I have met onsite in the neighborhoods. I have walked the proposed trail location with concern residents. I have walked through people's front yards, through their backyards, and even portions of the woods. I've met multiple times in coffeehouses. I've stood in residents' kitchens, and even sat on one resident's deck for a personal meeting that lasted over two and a half hours. To ensure that all questions and concerns were addressed, I even set up three separate meetings with myself and city staff at City Hall for the neighborhoods that had reached out to me with concerns. One for Holland Court, one for Stevens Walk, and one combined for Briars North and Madison. Every resident living in those neighborhoods received an invitation to the meeting mailed to them via the United States Postal Service. The meetings were very well-attended and lasted anywhere from an hour and 40 minutes to two hours each. I took notes at each meeting and shared those notes with the mayor, city council, and appropriate city staff to ensure that everyone was fully informed of the residents' concerns. With the hopes of mitigating some of the concerns I heard from residents, I personally created an alternate plan for the Womack-Mount Vernon-Tilly Mill project, which I shared with our Public Works team. That idea has now been formally reviewed and prepared as a new conceptual design for the project. And meetings have already been scheduled to review this new concept with Holland Court and Stevens Walk to get their feedback. The state that no one from the city is listening or has ever applied to them is simply not true. A somewhat related complaint is that the current city council has some secret agenda, has already made up its mind, and is trying to sneak these projects through without public input. First of all, as discussed a little earlier, these projects come directly from Dunwoody's master transportation plan, which is adopted by City Council in 2017. I've already discussed my personal efforts to listen to and address concerns raised by individuals and groups of residents, and that process remains ongoing. But let's take a step back to address where we are in the planning process for these projects. If you visit a project page on the city website, there's a project timeline on the top of the page that indicates seven basic stages of the project lifecycle, so that community can keep track of progress. Each of the projects we are discussing is currently in the first stage or the concept phase, where an idea is presented for public discussion and feedback. I think it is fair to say that is exactly what is happening. We are so early in the process that we still have two design phases yet to go, one for preliminary design and one for final design. Another sentiment I have heard rather frequently lately is people telling me that you are my representative on council, and you need to do what I want. Well, this creates a bit of a paradox or impossible situation, because how can I represent the interests of every individual when individual interests rarely, if ever, agree? Yes, I believe I have an obligation in my role as a City Council member to listen to everyone's opinion and concerns, and genuinely look for ways to help. But I can assure you that I have received significant feedback from residents in full support of these trail projects. Should those that oppose something be granted the power of veto? The growing sentiment in our society that you're either with me or against me is counterproductive and dangerous. It is my opinion that the best solution to any situation rarely resides at the extremes, but I'd say somewhere in between, if you have an open mind and are willing to look for it. Effective communication is the key here. When people think of communication, I believe most people think of speaking. But the other component of communication is listening. And I would argue that truly hearing what someone else has to say is the most important part of the communication process. So rather than simply dismissing a project, I prefer to drill down onto the specific reasons for opposition. Often, but certainly not always, there are solutions to address and mitigate those concerns. And the final solution may not be perfect, but that is okay, because I believe perfect is often the enemy of progress. Eventually, the planning has to stop and decisions have to be made. I want to clearly reiterate that I'm not trying to discount or dismiss anyone's opinion. I fully support and encourage the opportunity for the public to voice and express their concerns. I genuinely welcome all opinions with an open mind and truly believe that the more our residents are engaged in the process, the better we all are as a city. But we navigate a difficult road when the decision evolves into campaigns of unsubstantiated conspiracy theories and false information. The object of this debate shouldn't be, I'm sorry, the objective of this debate shouldn't be to win, but to arrive at the solution that best serves our city. That remains my goal, and as always, I'm readily available to anyone that would like to engage in an open-minded dialogue on any city issue. Thank you.
All right, we'll have council comment, I think, at the end as well, but does anybody have anything? Catherine, Stacy?
I just want to say thank you to Tom for the inordinate amount of time that he has spent on this, and not only meeting with all the residents and answering all the questions, but really being the lead person on this, and I appreciate your words tonight. I have been the subject of innuendo and conspiracy theories as well. So I appreciate you setting the record straight that we strive to be as transparent as possible and listen to as many citizens as we can, and thank you, Tom.
Again, I want to, I say, you know, being on councils is like being in an arranged marriage with six other people. So everybody provides different things that comes to the table with and provides different time and resources, and I appreciate the work that Tom's putting in, that Rob's, Catherine, Lynn, Stacy, John, everybody here, bringing to the table different, different things to the plate moving forward. So we are moving forward, and I appreciate about execution. We're going to be moving forward with implementing our plans. Thank you.
John.
Yeah, no comment. Good, thank you. Appreciate everybody else's comments, though.
Thank you. Since I have the opportunity about deer hunting, so that you don't have to stay till the end for council comments if you don't want. So we are aware of the problem. We have discussed it previously. We have a new attorney. We're going to ask him to see what options we may have. The city of Sandy Springs, at their council meeting a few days ago, began, had the same discussion that we've all had over and over again. And we have our legislative support team here, too. And so we understand, let me say, I understand the problem. I think council understands the problem. We are not ignoring it. In 2006, the voters of Georgia passed a constitutional amendment that gave hunters more powers than legislature could, and so it's a really tricky situation, but one that we have not given up on trying to come to some solution. So say that. Thank you. All right, with that, it is time for reports and presentations. Eric?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right, the City Managers Report, ending November 11th, 2022. I want to start out with the Police Department. We currently had the, we had the trunk or treat at Brook Run on October 27th. We also had the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on October 29th. If you look through If you look through the different things, you'll see there's a lot of, you know, Dunwoody is a, is a city within the metropolitan area, have quite a few various crimes that the police have solved and are working on, and also amount of activity that goes on within the city. I did also want to address that we, we will redo the Berry Dunn meeting. It'll be sometime in January from the one from last Tuesday. That will be redone. There, they've had, there is an online process. We've had about fifty-five comments on that so far. And and the study is going very well to date. I believe all the council members except for one have met with the with the crew that's come in. And so that's what we have for that. Moving on to the next area, which is Public Works. The Spalding Storm Drain Upgrade. Astra Contracting has begun boring for the new storm drain crossing there, so that detour hopefully won't be too much longer. And also the Georgetown Gateway, Georgia Power, has removed the old utility poles north of Chateau, Chateau Drive, so the city's contractor can finish the remaining work on this part of the project. The contractor has completed about ninety percent of the path north of Chateau. Shambly Dunwoody Womack Intersection, Wilson Construction has completed both retaining walls. Georgia Power has also relocated the overhead power lines. We continue delays in the area between nine AM and four PM daily during the weekdays and when weather is permitting. Dunwoody Park Sidewalk, we have the new sidewalk to begin between Shambly Dunwoody Road and Dunwoody South, Dunwoody Park South, excuse me. Parks Department, we had last Friday at the Veterans Celebration, we had Robert Patrick, our de cab commissioner, give the city a check for one hundred thousand dollars to go towards the Veterans Memorial at Brook Run Park. Also, we did have the Georgia Parks and Recreation Association recognize our Parks Department, Brent Walker and his staff, for our marketing, visibility, and publication award for the Grooving on the Green. So that's brand-new information that came out just last week on that. We do have our December first Holiday Lights opening night. And January sixteenth will be the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. Let's see, we have the site grading for Two Bridges Park is seventy-five percent complete. You haven't had the opportunity to drive by there, please do. You'll see the footer for the bathroom, pump room has been poured and the playground equipment installation has begun. The nature trail is about ninety-five percent complete. And the parking lot curb and gutter is about fifty percent complete, so that project is coming on very nicely. Community development, the work at High Street continues to move swiftly. Framing is occurring on the fifth and sixth levels of the multifamily buildings. Site work for the second phase of Campus two four four, which is the parking deck and hotel, has started. The Buffalo Wild Wing Restaurant at Hammond Drive at the corner of the mall is being framed. Mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are being installed there. The PF Chang's, of course, that was kind of next door here, is now moved to the mall, and that's complete. And also the new Quick Trip, which is now kind of next door, is being topped out with mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are being installed there. Trees Atlanta has planted their first ten trees in the front yard tree planting program. Just wanted to let y'all know that, because that's underway, something that y'all approved and put extra money in to that program. Finance, you'll find within the report, the financial report for September the twenty-second, there's a link in there for that. Also, municipal court has disposed of seven hundred and eight cases, and thirty-eight cases were reset for last month. And the department has prepared a two thousand and twenty-three municipal court calendar. Also, the clerk's office has processed four hundred and forty-six open record requests for the month of October. It's a little bit higher than usual for that month, but there's quite a bit of activity people want to know about within the city. Mayor and council, I'm glad to answer any questions you may have on this report.
We'll start on John's end.
No questions. Eric, thank you. Keeping with the theme of the Trail Master Plan, do you mind just mentioning, this is kind of last minute since the report was made about our coming, upcoming couple of public opportunities to provide some feedback on that schedule and when and where those will be?
So for the PATH, we, there'll be a booth set up on November the twentieth at Light Up Dunwoody. So look out for that, and that's something we finalized. We already had it in the works, but we finalized that today. And the activity, everything's confirmed. Greta, which is our contact at PATH, will be there. Also, on December seventh, in this room here at six PM, is another meeting to talk about the PATH and trail system. And then also as a side note, on the tenth of December, we have the Vermac Park meeting as well. I think, Joe, that you're hosting out there, and I think many of the council members will be there at Vermac Park, will be onsite. Hopefully, it won't be thirty-eight degrees, but nonetheless, it will be on that day. So.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. Just appreciate, because we're trying to outreach your people to provide feedback, and so we're trying to go to where the people are as well. That makes their schedule. So as I could say, so during Light Up Dunwoody, just show up there, drop by, provide feedback. A guy asked me today, where's the plan I could provide feedback on? I said, you get to provide the feedback of what the plan will be. Right? So you're at the initial stages of that, so that's great. Update on the check washing at the post office as well. I noted that on the police activities. Do we have any other update on that investigation?
Yes. So, I mean, and the chief may want to come up and address that. I know he's been working very diligently with a post master on that issue, because that's become a very large concern for many residents of Dunwoody, anybody who uses that post office. Chief?
Sure. Our investigators are working very closely with the postal inspector, who actually investigates external thefts, but also the Inspector General's Office, who actually does the internal thefts. So it's two different, because some of these appear like it could be external thefts, but others appear to be maybe internal theft by employees. And so it's happening at multiple places, sometimes when people have mailed things from their own mailbox, and it's picked up by the postal person. And other times when they've dropped them off at a box, whether it's in the village, whether it's at Walmart, or whether it's over at Independence Square, different places. So we are working very closely with the postal inspector.
When you say the postal inspector, is that somebody high level, or is it the Dunwoody one? Like, where are we in the urgency?
Okay. That's the state. They, they have responsibility for investigating crime that's happening at the post office. It's a federal agency.
Do we feel like it's getting the proper attention? From the, okay.
Well, we, we had actually a meeting that was pretty productive a couple of weeks ago. And every time we have a new case, we're sending that to them, and again, stressing the importance of this, so, yeah.
Last thing for Eric, more of a comment, but thank you to the staff for Brent Walker, Michael Smith. Chief, oh, you might have another question, chief. But out in front of the Brook Run Park there on North Peach Tree, where Peeler is, you know, just created a little extra, you know, twenty-foot segment of sidewalk there, because it was a little goat path there, whatever called through this, through the grass, and I was like, hey, let's just do it where people are naturally walking, and you guys, guys did that. So again, just that incrementalism of supporting a safer place to walk or ride bikes in the city, it's a little bit, but it does help. Thank you.
Chief, my question to you was, the sex trafficking talk that was held on the tenth, how well attended was it, and what do you think the reception was?
I'm sorry, which talk?
The panel discussion on the sex trafficking.
It was, you know, it was a rainy night, I think, and a school night, but it was well-attended. I think there were about fifty to sixty people there. And so it was a good discussion.
And then my next question, I don't know whether it's to you or Michael Smith, but that Shambly Dunwoody, the Spalding detour, that I know we have police officers helping direct traffic. Now, I got stuck in it this past week. How is that working, and how do we feel like the detour is going better? Like, are they?
Michael Smith probably could answer that better.
You got stuck in it when there was an officer out there, or, yeah. So we, we put an officer out there for morning rush hour and afternoon, like two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon, to help the traffic flow during those times. Other parts of the day, it is backing up a little bit, but it was worse during those times. So we're, we're doing that and just trying to get the road open as soon as we can.
Catherine, thank you.
I'll just comment on that from a, from a resident who stated that it isn't better with the police officer there in terms of there is a backup, but it is, it's more understandable. So there's a lot, the simmer's, you know, tones down the, the angry response, frustration. Yes, so the police officer is appreciated out there. Thank you.
Rob?
Just a quick question. Where do we stand on the staffing for the police department? Are we, we sworn a new officer today? How many openings do we have? Chief's coming up.
So I think currently we have either, I can't remember, five or six openings. And we have, I'm interviewing someone Thursday for an interview to do potential conditional job offer. We have two others already in background. We tested someone today who passed, so they'll be in background. That's a sworn position. And we have three other applications of sworn officers. So we have about six or seven candidates in background right now at various stages that have applied, and we're hopeful that we can be at full staff in the not-too-distant future.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Uh, Tom, anything? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, Shane Peoples.
Appreciate it. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. For those of you that aren't familiar with me and our code enforcement team, my name is Shane Peoples. And with the help of Inspector Valerie Hicks and Sharon Hill, we have the pleasure of conducting the city's code enforcement operations throughout the city. I'll only take up a few minutes of y'all's time tonight, just to briefly go over some of our special projects and our code enforcement process. Currently, we, so I think historically Dunwoody's only had two code enforcement officers, and you guys were gracious enough to prove us a third, which we appreciate that. But with that, what we've done is we've been able to divide the city into three different districts. And each of the officers, as myself, were able to be assigned a district. We worked with GIS to get these district maps. And down at the bottom there, you'll see our assigned districts. I also handle the commercial areas like Georgetown and the Village and over near the mall area as well. We're still there to back each other up if complaints are rolling in steady in a respective officer's district. But one thing this has allowed us to do is to stick an inspector in these specific districts. And that allows the inspector to become familiar with that district and for the citizens to become familiar with that inspector as well. And they can also be familiar with a lot of the challenges within, within that district. So I want to go over our code enforcement process here. I mean, there's five aspects of it, which is education, the initial complaint, notice of violation, citation, and then the abatement. We, I do want to say we are a complaint-driven, we work complaint-driven enforcement. So if anything's called in, we inspect it, and, and there's violations found, and we'll move forward in the enforcement. But the education for our, our website here, and I put a picture here, is a great resource for the citizens as well as staff to research our code and some of the more frequent things that we tend to deal with on a day-to-day basis. You can also file online complaints there through our iWork portal, which, when citizens use that portal, it's one of the, I'm more fond of that method there. When citizens use that method, that email goes directly to the inspector immediately. So if they're in the car in the district, they get that complaint and can get it immediately. We also have our complaint line, as well as our complaint email address as well. And all that information can be found on the city website under the Code Enforcement tab. Our information is there as well, our phone numbers and our email addresses. So some of the complaints that we do, complaint types, we typically see, we have officer observed complaints, online complaints, our compliance line, email, and then we also get internal complaints from city staff, such as Public Works or or any other of our departments as well that we investigate. So if we're called out and there is a violation present after our inspection, you know, seeing that it's not life safety, our first enforcement action is a notice of violation. And I put a picture of our actual, this is our actual form that our notice of violation that we would send out to an address. Because a lot of the times, citizens will get this, and they'll say, oh, I've been cited, you know, what's going on? And it's not a citation, it's just a code enforcement notice of violation, and it's the initial step in the response to the violation. It identifies what's going on on the property, and we also provide a reasonable time to correct the violations, typically five days, but sometimes they're extenuating circumstances that we may have to go to ten days or so. So, but I just want to stress this, it's not a citation. This is our notice of violation. We also use door hangers as well, so. And then after that has failed, or we haven't been able to achieve compliance through the notice of violation, then we'll move to a citation, and this is also a picture for citation. Typically, try to issue these onsite to people, but sometimes there are circumstances to where we aren't able to issue them to the property owners. So we'll have to cert, cert through the Secretary of State's website or de cab, tax assessors get the best information we can, and we'll send it certified mail as well. But this is a summons issued after the education element has failed. And generally given a court date and to come in and speak with the solicitor to see if we can't get the case adjudicated that way. Just to kind of change, change modes here. We have a few special projects. That's not all of them. We've got more, but some of the more important ones are apartment sweeps, prohibited signs, commercial property sweeps, and our short-term rental enforcement. I'll start with the property multifamily sweeps. We do these inspections, and they're done on our apartment units here in the city. And we only notate the exterior violations. And we, after that, report myself, Valerie, and Sharon, we all divide those buildings up and go through the exterior of those buildings and notate all the violations on a shared report. That report is then given to the property management company to get those violations into compliance within thirty days or less. We do allow for, you know, there's a lot of cases, some of our larger units, thirty days is not enough, and they'll ask for an extension, and that is reviewed. But I would say out of all of our special projects, this is the most important, because a lot of the citizens don't even know that this is an option or that we even do this. So it allows us to kind of give them a voice to get some of those violations into compliance. I just, a few pictures. This was done when I first arrived here in twenty twenty-one. And these are some of the violations that we typically see, graffiti, you know, outside storage, unsecured buildings, and motorcycles, and this is just the beginning of what we can see on some of those, some of those sweeps. Our prohibited sign enforcement, we a lot of our sign enforcement is signs in the right of way during election season and things like that. But we also take care of things of properties that have moved in or moved out, I should say. Vacant signs, those are the things that we try to get removed as well. Our vacant properties program, this is something where the third officer has helped. Sharon's done a great job with this program. We maintain a vacant properties list, and she inspects those properties once a month for open doors, violations as, you know, high weeds and grass, anything like that. We try to get the best information as far as the We try to get the best information as far as the property owners so that we can reach out to them. If we do find violations, it's, it's challenging sometimes, but you know, we try to maintain a updated list of that. But as soon as those properties are purchased, we take those off the list as long as they're being maintained. These inspections are really critical as well because the blight, we all know the problems that that can, can bring to a community. Finally, our short term rental enforcement's kind of, kind of started just doing it now. Still trying to work out the kinks of it and the challenges of it. But properties or units are identified via citizen complaints. Or we've also started, well, myself actually just started combing a lot of the websites that are out there to find the short term rentals that we have here in the city. And once those properties are identified, we will send out the notice of violation to the owner, letting them know what our policy here in the city is and that those listings will have to be changed to reflect what our ordinance here in the city is. It's challenging, I will say more so challenging with the multifamily units. But I will tell you, we've gotten buy-in from the property management companies helping us out. They don't want it happening there. It's not good for their business model. And so when they can identify a unit, they've helped me out by passing on my information to, or they've got, and I've found a lot that they've had their own process going on where they've even threatened to evict people as well. But I would say the most success I've seen is the single family residents. I've issued those notices to those property owners or homeowners and they've been very compliant and say, hey, we just want to be in compliance with what the city wants us to do. So like I said, we're working closely with the leasing offices and the multifamily properties to get that done. And I know a lot of municipalities, the code enforcement, they're using softwares to identify them, which makes it a little easy. It's not always the best because I've used it in a previous municipality, but it does help. But you know, I think as long as we're, if we can get the education out there, which I know we're working with communications to do, I think we'll start seeing, seeing a turnaround.
Okay. Questions, discussion, starting with Tom?
Yeah, thank you, Shane. Thank you for the presentation. I think that was important for the public to hear. I, you have a very sometimes underappreciated and misunderstood job. And, but we do appreciate everything you and your team do for the city. And I think it's great for that, the, the community got to learn a little bit more about that as well. I, I just have one question for you. You mentioned earlier in the presentation that the fact that we did add an additional code enforcement officer for, for this year. Can you speak a little bit to how that has impacted, impacted your team's ability to, to do your job, to be more reactive? And perhaps even proactive in situations?
Oh, for sure. I mean, it's allowed us to have another car out there on the street, another set of eyes to pick up on violations. And like I said, as far as the apartment sweep goes, some of these larger apartment complexes are the ones with the most problems. If we're, we're able to more effectively inspect those buildings versus having two, you know, officers out there trying to inspect a two, 300 unit apartment complex, so.
Okay. Whoops. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. And I always appreciate the responsiveness of you and your team.
I'll echo the thanks and I'll ask a question. You don't need to answer right now, but I would just say you and your staff, when you're working, if you're getting complaints about issues that are not well covered by our ordinances, I just hope you'll share that with us. So if we need to tweak something so that, you know, because you're kind of the frontline of interaction with the public. And so I would rather us try to fix problems, you know, that you all see or that you, as you get feedback from citizens early on, rather than, you know, people complaining, no one ever, nothing ever gets done about something, when we can make some sort of fix. So just, just a request for the future. Thank you.
Do you have a plan or schedule for apartment sweeps? Is that a yearly?
It's, we don't, we don't typically have a forecast form. We normally just, during while we're riding out, I ask the inspectors, if you're in a area where you're getting a high volume of calls, let's take a look at that one. See if we might need to sweep it for, for the year, but we can, that's something we can definitely look at doing.
It might be valuable. Then nothing is missed. And then those residents have exactly what you want, this, this care that they, they don't even know that they, they need. So just a suggestion. Thank you.
Stacy?
Um, I just kind of had a question. When we talk about the complaints and coming in, is it multifamily? Is it single residential? Is it neighbor versus neighbor? Is a person walking down the sidewalk? Like what's the, is there a commonality? I'm just curious as to, because we are complaint driven, like what, what do you find your focus to be and, and where?
I would say the majority of the complaints is neighbor versus.
Joe, anything?
Hey Shane, um, thank you for everything you do. You guys do a ride along like the police do?
That would be a question for Aaron.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. It might be interesting.
Asked that before though.
Um, so I'm a big like analysis, reporting data guy as well. So I got a couple of related questions. Perfect world. I'd love to see combined a C Click Fix and iWorks to submit issues. And whether it's, I know we, there's only so much we can do internally on staff to IT systems and we have to watch the scope and all sorts of things. But have you had a little bit of conversations of discussions about potentially going to a common platform?
No, I'd love to. I'd love to. I have not added, but I'd love to go to a common, yeah. I mean, we, we get, we get a few from Public Works through C Quick Fix and it's a great tool. That's all saying in the presentation, I, I would love, it, it works, it's more efficient for us to get them through iWork because we get them immediately. And they're not coming from property from places, but that would be a wonderful conversation to have.
Yeah, I definitely would like to see that eventually. Maybe we put that on our, our budgeting for future to, to get to that single place. It's greater for the citizens. And, and laying on top of that reporting, do you have, are you able to have a dashboard of metrics of what, like by type, by case, by open, closed status and so on?
We do, we have that with iWork and they've even added some new features here recently, last couple of months.
So potentially we could add that to our monthly city manager report potentially to see a status of what's open, closed, just by type. Don't need a low level, you know, don't, don't give the address or so on. But I definitely support what Catherine said about making sure that they're scheduled for the multifamily. Absolutely. To do that, surprise, notice. And then just scheduling wise weekends, are you guys working on the weekends?
We are, it's sporadic now. Some want to work weekend. I try myself to work at least one weekend a month. But it's something I'm talking to with the inspectors, just at least get out there and have a presence out there. So people will see us driving through and that we are doing some.
There's, you know, we have activity going on on the weekends, of course, that's so on and so forth. And then just to let people know more of a comment than a question, but when you do, when a citizen submits a, a ticket, et cetera, they realize that they're going to be open, subject to open records that they would be identified, correct? Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Shane. You guys do a wonderful job. Thank you. I appreciate the efforts. I appreciate the, the, the work being put forward. Tell me about the sign sweeps in the sense of signs along the side of the road in the right of way. In the right of way, they're immediately in violation. How quick are we picking these things up?
So we're trying to, I myself do a sweep. I'll do one tomorrow. We try to do them for each officer, tell them to sweep their area at least once a week. I definitely try to do it on the weekend because what I've noticed the last couple of weeks is they, they more, especially in our hotspot areas, start showing up around Thursday to Friday.
Garage sales, right?
Garage sales and then out, out on the far end to town over there off of 285 off of Cotillion there. So Mondays too, Monday morning, because I know they, on the weekends, they.
Yeah, please, the exit ramps.
Right.
Thank you. As far as the violations, one of the things that I'm notified of all the time is sanitation is overflowing. Garbage cans overflowing at multifamily units. What's our jurisdiction and what's our fix? If you see the sanitation, you know, a lot of garbage outside the cans. So what's our fix? How do we do that?
Well, we immediately go through with, our first point is to notify them, give them notice of violation. We'll give them five or so days. Recently, I guess the beginning of the year, people were complaining of sanitation, labor problems. And we were sympathetic to that until a point, and then we have to issue citations for them to come into court. We had a multifamily unit that that happened to, they ended up enlarging the dumpster pad and getting more dumpsters onsite. And we haven't had any more issues out there at that particular. But our initial step is our code enforcement process with the notice of violation. And then we have, if we moved after move citation, then that's.
Okay. Let's circle back to, a couple of people have mentioned, you have a new there staff member, so you have more work. It's not just as it happens, you now have historical information. Tell me about your data system. There's a house maybe that needs a major cleanup. There might be something going on, whether it's, you know, the house is abandoned, whatever the issue is. Do we have to wait six months for it to grow back up? Or are you going to go look at that house since it was a known issue? You were forced to clean up, you went through and did all the work to find somebody to get that house cleaned up.
Yeah.
So when do you go back? What, I mean, what's your follow-up? I mean, you, what data do you have? And are you looking at problem areas in order to ensure compliance is ongoing? Or are you waiting for the neighbor next door to make that complaint again?
For vacant properties?
Big, anything vacant property, long grass, known issues that people have complained about.
Right.
Are you waiting for us to complain the second time? Or are you looking at your database going, all right, we cleaned them up six weeks ago. Let's see what they look like, you know, today.
Yeah. So we do have data in, in the way of what we have on iWork. So if we go to a resident and we know that we've had number, a number of issues there where we've issued notices after notices and maybe even citations, that's going to be a address that we're going to put on our radar to drive by periodically through the month. Or however, to, to make sure we can head off any violations, the continuous violations. So we're doing regular inspections on our sort of problem. I don't say problem, but you know, some of our more frequent cases that we get.
Because if you don't have a data system, I have people in my neighborhood that I keep really long records.
Yes.
They keep really good records and they will notify me and you of, of every time you visited it somehow. So I want to make sure that we're proactive in the sense that we've given you some staff. I'd love to find that, that database that you are proactively looking at the problem issues within the city.
Nope.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay. I just have a couple of, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions. So what is, whose responsibility is like health and safety? Like in an apartment complex that has a detention pond that's not well maintained?
It's the, it's the.
There was, but it's, can we cite them for that kind of thing?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's part of, I look at that when we do our inspections, I'm the one that looks at all the detention.
Right. So early in the pandemic, Councilman Tom, and she's not here anymore. She got a list of faith-based group that might step in in this situation with single family homeowners who simply could not maintain their own properties. I don't know if we ever made referrals from that list or we still have it, we can replicate it if we need to. But when you come, I don't know how often you come across the situation where the homeowner or the tenant of a single family home, because apartment complexes are a whole different ball of wax, simply can't maintain their property.
We do.
And do we share resources with them or we need to update all that for y'all?
We're probably, we would.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll get some, we'll get that information together.
Yeah, right now we just, we point towards, we send links and give literature out from state programs.
Okay.
So anything would.
Okay. And in the case of single family homes, when it's neighbor versus neighbor, but the neighbor might have a, like the grass is now three feet high. What, how oft is it, are we frequently now coming across, or have forever, and we just didn't know, coming across people who simply cannot maintain their property? As opposed to absentee landlords or negligent homeowners?
We fed it all from people that are just elderly.
Yeah, okay.
Might not be able to get outside, do it to people who just can't monetarily.
Well, we'll work on trying to develop that resource list again. And because I think it would be a good local project for scouts or churches, places of worship, community service hours. Lots of high schoolers need, middle schoolers need community service hours. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Shane. This has been very helpful.
You guys.
All right. Next up is consent. Does anybody have any questions or comments on consent?
No proof.
Move by Tom. Second, and I just want to say thank you to the finance department for doing the sinking fund and being transparent and something we can move forward with.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on this? Nope. Seeing none, I call the question on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed, hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up. I think Sharon might have to read this. There's nothing, Jay, by the way.
I don't have the resolution right in front of me, Mayor.
Okay. Oh, it's, I think it's just the title of the agenda item, but maybe not.
Okay. A resolution establishing the 2023 state legislative priorities at the city of Dunwoody for consideration by the Georgia State Legislature during the 2023 regular session.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have with me tonight Ted Burdo and Chris Hopper from Terminus Strategies, who will do at the beginning of this, a brief update on the past week's elections review and a preview of the 2023 session, and then we'll move into the resolution afterwards.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Ted Burdo, colleague Chris Hopper, and we have a new member of our firm, Theron Johnson in the back here. Give a, give you a quick overview of the election outcomes and then kind of anticipated what's to come in 2023 session and then answer any questions that you might have.
Can you please make sure you're speaking in the microphone? Thank you.
So good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Chris Hoppers. Ted said, I'm partner at Terminus Strategies. I'm here tonight to talk about the 2022 midterm election. More specifically, the voter turnout and the outcomes of the elections. With voter turnout, as you may have already known, the Georgia, Georgians casted midterm ballots at a record breaking pace. More than 2.5 million Georgians casted a vote during the three week early voting period, which for perspective, that surpassed the 1.8 million total in 2018 and almost exceeded the 2020 presidential election of 2.6 million. As for overall turnout in this election, nearly four million voters voted, which represents approximately 57% of the total registered voters. Moving to the out, to the election outcomes, it's worth noting that this is the first election since redistricting. U.S. Senate race between incumbent Senator Raphael Warnock and challenger Herschel Walker will head to the runoff on December 6th after neither one of them obtained a 50% plus one votes necessary to avoid the runoff. Less than a percentage point separated the candidates, which is approximately 35,000 votes. That said, the Democrats have retained control in the Senate with at least a 50-50 split. So this Georgia Senate race will still be important and will further determine the margin of control in the U.S. Senate. The U.S. House delegation is now nine Republicans and five Democrats with a GOP plus one result. The delegation room remains the same, other than Rich McCormick in the sixth and Mike Collins in the 10th district. As for statewide constitutional officers, Georgia state government holds a trifecta status, meaning that the Republican Party holds a governor's office as well as a majority in both chambers. Got the state legislature. Governor Brian Kemp won reelection against Stacey Abrams by more than seven and a half percentage points. And Republicans swept the other state constitutional offices, including a new lieutenant governor in Bert Jones, an agriculture commissioner, Tyler Harper, labor commissioner Bruce Thompson, as well as other incumbents, Secretary of State Brad Raffensperger, Attorney General Chris Carr, Insurance Commissioner John King. And then notably, there is, I went through the whole list, State School Superintendent Richard Wood, who received the most votes on the ballot. Moving to the state House and Senate, the composition of the Georgia State House and Senate remain nearly the same. Republicans lost a net two seats in the House and one seat in the Senate. The state House is comprised of 101 Republicans and 79 Democrats for a 56-44% split. I wanted to note that House District 129, a formerly Democrat held seat, is still awaiting a special election on December 20th to fill the vacancy for the late Representative Henry Wayne Howard. And it's projected that seat's going to go to a Democrat. The state Senate is now comprised of 33 Republicans and 23 Democrats for a 59-41% split. There are many new members in the General Assembly. Ted is going to talk about next year's, I guess, like the hot topics during session, but we have a lot of new faces. The House has 42 new members, 17 Republican, 25 Democrat. The Senate has 10 new members, six Republican, four Democrat. Speaking of new members, the Dunwoody delegation has a new. Speaking of new members, the Dunwoody delegation has a new member as well. While both Senator Sally Harrell and Representative Shay Roberts won reelection, um, new member Long Tran defeated Brian Anderson for House District eighty. Last thing I wanted to talk about was caucus elections, caucus leadership elections. Following the elections, caucus leadership races are always just around the corner. The Republican caucus leadership elections occurred last Friday in the Senate and earlier today in the House. Um, the down caucus leadership elections will occur in the next coming weeks. Um, in addition to the forty-two new members, Speaker David Ralston also announced that he will not seek another term as speaker. And earlier today during the caucus election in the House, former Majority Leader John Burns was nominated as the new speaker as a highlight.
So post caucus leadership elections, we kind of have a better understanding of what we're gonna anticipate next year in the twenty twenty-three, um, session. Um, we'll get a even further kind of gleaming down of what the issues uh, leadership are interested in at the biennial, which is the first weekend in December in Athens. It's a legislative training and kind of a welcome initiation for new members of the House and Senate. Uh, this will be the first year of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial. So any legislation introduced this year, just stay alive for next year. So we'll have to track that as we go forward for the next two years. Um, and then the kind of major issues that we've heard through the summer and in legislative meetings over the summer and during campaign season began with the budget. The F Y twenty-two surplus reached almost six billion dollars. That's after the budget was twenty-eight point six billion dollars in spending. So during the amended F Y twenty-two, we'll probably see some new money spent there. It'll be interesting to see how the new leadership of both parties looks to, um, kind of prioritize that, that extra surplus money. For the F Y twenty-three revenue, which started July first, um, the last month we fall returns in revenue where it was October, it was a nine point three percent increase. That brings our year-to-date total revenue of ten point three two billion, which is up seven point eight percent year-over-year. So despite some concerns about economic slowdown, that still hasn't been really seen in Georgia to this point. Um, other issues that we anticipate seeing are some local control issues that I know the city is always interested in. One of those issues that was debated over the interim was H B ten ninety-three introduced by Representative Dale Washburn, which is a prohibition against certain use restrictions. That bill did not get any traction in committee and then was in in lieu of a committee vote, he went for a H R eleven forty-nine study committee. That study committee met twice, um, two days each, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, October twelfth and thirteenth. We anticipate a report coming out of that pretty soon, which we'll happily share with all of you. Um, it was called the House Study Committee on Regulation of Affordability and Access to Housing. As always, there'll be some other, uh, local control issues that we'll continue to monitor and keep you all rested on.
What, what was the, this, what's, can you dumb that down for me? What, what are they trying to do or not do?
So this is the issue around essentially, um, large hedge fund type industry housing in neighborhoods and communities. They want to do rent-to-own type, uh,
No.
cookie cutter subdivisions.
There's no owning, so it's, they build a product that looks the same as a product that could be purchased. But they, they run them like apartment complexes, but they don't want cities to be able to regulate and inspect like they do apartment complexes.
That's. Other issues that we kind of anticipate seeing a large, large conversation around is healthcare. Uh, we especially see a conversation continuing on mental health. The, uh, Mental Health Reform and Innovation Task Force Commission is still going on. And we know that Representative Mayor Mark Oliver and Todd Jones are continuing to examine kind of what needed to be fixed from last year's bill and what else they can do to move forward and further that conversation. Also, there's a task force that the government put together on healthcare workforce, kind of coming out of the pandemic. What that revealed about the healthcare workforce in the state and what kind of changes we could anticipate moving forward into that. Uh, gambling is obviously gonna come back again, sports betting and casinos. Um, you know, it's our belief that casinos is still not really, um, popular. But I think there might be a larger conversation around lottery funding and how that, um, sports betting could tie into that. And then lastly, this was really why we put the asterisk next to it, because when we put the presentation together, leadership elections had not occurred. Uh, Speaker Ralston kind of toured the state, discussing how nothing was gonna be discussed in the House outside of those policies which would attract younger talent and increase economic development with the nomination of John Burns, kind of anticipate that still being the case. Um, so look for moderate policies coming out of the House that are geared towards making Georgia more appealing to corporations and individuals. And then happy to answer any questions before vote on the.
Okay, um, John, you have any questions?
Thank you, Ted, for the briefing. It's, uh, interesting that Speaker Ralston is stepping down or is no longer running for that position again. And his replacement, you think is a, a moderate, much like himself?
The leadership under Speaker Ralston coalesced around, uh, then leader John Burns. So he seems to be the quote-unquote heir apparent to that type of leadership structure.
All right, and as far as the zoning control changes that have popped up in the legislature the last couple of years that have been beaten down and said no to, you're still watching that closely. It sounds like those are the two bills and the study committee that we need to watch carefully.
Yeah, those would probably be the two that I think the city will be, that I, that we anticipate for sure coming forward, because the city would be most interested in.
There was a member of the legislature that would put forth bills to take, to take, uh, funding or take issues off the tax rolls or off the tax bill. Uh, you know, like I'd say sanitation is on there now and other things. Do you know if that is coming back? Do you understand, do you? Maybe I'm not explaining it well, but there was a
He lost.
Maybe that's, maybe that's a good thing. All right.
Okay, maybe.
He's gone. All right, all right. So that's something that we've been watching in the past. Um, you've mentioned those studies, you've mentioned those two bills. Please brief us on those as soon as you can. I'm interested in those in particular. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Joe.
Um, a couple of just procedural things too that, uh, like, like to hear about if, look, this is just like wishless things. Um, we gotta deal with G dot, right? And that's the authority. How can we effectively deal with it? I know there's a legislative, but right, the G dot, right? That's so huge with what may or may not happen. Um, I will just keep on saying this until whenever. I'd love to have dedicated state funding for transit. Love for them to expand Medicare without a waiver. Um, yeah, those are, those are the, but otherwise do we have an op, I understand procedurally, this is an action item, but then do us, um, you know, it doesn't have to be hard fast tonight, you up and down, but for us to provide you feedback of things we'd like you to focus on as we coalesce and move forward. Um, we have an opportunity to just go through the mayor. Um, what do you think, uh, is a good way to route that through?
I, I think if I have a, oh, there we go. I have a few change, I have a few additions maybe, and so we may defer. And if people have ideas that we want to include in the resolution, but as things come up or you think of things, we can always reach out to Ted. They communicate a lot during the session with all of us, and so we have a way to give feedback that way.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it a little bit informal. Hey, we work with you. It's a handshake agreement. We're, we're writing, et cetera. You know what I mean? So, yeah, appreciate that.
Stacy.
And my apologies if I was thinking about something and missed it. What is on the EMS? What?
So there was a conversation earlier in the summer and we'll kind of see how this progresses around possibly zone changing and then wait times around EMS and how nine-one-one operates into this. Uh, we'll see how that has changed now with AMC's closure in Midtown. I think it kind of puts a little bit of a damper on stretching resources further than they were. Um, it's definitely something we're gonna monitor for the city as the conversation progresses from where it was this summer.
Heather, anything?
Um, yeah, I just want to clarify, one of the, uh, priorities listed is the, um, supporting, uh, removing the school systems from approving applications, it, but it mentions, um, citizens directing traffic. Is that related to the speed cameras or is that a different issue?
It's a different issue in Georgia. You have to have a yeah, that's been on there for a long time.
Is, is the speed camera issue still?
Oh, yeah. No, we're, no, we need to, we haven't really. They're gonna hire a new superintendent, I hear. Well, no, they have an interim right now. So I hear that they may hire a new superintendent, so, um, that's the rumor. Right, so, but we need to focus on that. We need to remove the requirement for the school system to have to approve something on our right of way.
Correct.
Ever, maybe this will be the year and G M A supports that as well, so. And it turns out it's not just like us and Cobb. It's, it's not, there's multiple places. Yeah. So potentially maybe.
We've had several positive conversations
Okay.
over the summer regarding that issue.
Yeah.
We'll see.
And years ago Vanderlin was using parents to try to make traffic flow better and a neighbor complained. And so they had to stop and then the same neighbor complained about traffic. So go figure. Um, anyway. Okay, is that, did, did you have more?
Yeah, no, that, that's fine. Thank you.
So I would like us to add EMS as a priority, Jay. I don't know if you're here. And so, um, if it's okay, I'd like to bring this back just with, ooh, I just pushed a button, chief. It didn't mean anything. Okay, sorry. I saw it. I don't know if I pushed it hard enough, but it, I leaned in, um.
There was no reaction.
Right, so nothing. So they come down, right? Um, I think E- EMS, I don't know if you know this, but EMS is a huge problem for us. And the first thing that needs to happen is the cab needs to be put into two zones or something, something's got to give.
We will discuss.
But if you will discuss the language, making it a priority, that would be really helpful. Um, the other thing, question I have is, there was a study committee on development authorities. Have they met? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I'll check into that.
Okay.
But I know they have not filed a report because I was looking at reports today.
Okay, um, we have in our priorities that we would be open to development authorities that unless there's a partnership, a signed agreement, that outside development authorities can't make deals in Dunwoody or Brookhaven or whatever, you know, just, yeah, okay, um.
Basically, a municipality that already has a development authority, you don't have another one coming in.
Right. And then finally, I don't know how to make this happen politically. But the rules about virtually attending council meetings, for example, are pretty archaic. Um, I think it's two meetings a year and then you have to have a doctor's letter and, but it was probably written in the day of conference calls, if I had to bet. And so it, I don't think it should be open-ended. I don't think you uh, or maybe we should go to local control and let each jurisdiction adopt their own rules. But I don't know if, you know, working with our legislators, if y'all can help draft something or I guess it would be edit what's already out there. Um, or at least begin the discussion with our representatives. Um, again, I'm not asking that, I think it should be a local decision.
Uh, another one is, um, you know, I, I work in the private sector. I work for Accenture. We would never share publicly our information system securities plan.
That's already been fixed. They fixed that for executive session last session, didn't they? You can do I T problems.
Security is now permitted.
Yes, gotcha. Thank you. Lot, problem solved. Got what you asked for. Um, so the, the, I know we'll mostly be playing defense, but, um, the, the, yeah, that's what I have.
We can have.
Okay, so if y'all can add those and then just bring it back, that'd be great. Y'all don't have to necessarily come back, but you can if you want. All right, do you need anything from us?
Um, I don't believe so.
All right, well, go ahead, Joe.
Finalize if I may.
Go, John.
Um, I'm always interested in the de cab delegation meetings. If you can give us some update, give us some timeframe. I work downtown. I'm happy to go and attend and sit along the wall and just, you know, it's the it's a good show. Sometimes I, sometimes I enjoy watching the show, so.
They will send you their, their schedule. They set that in the beginning of session.
Please, it would be, uh, beneficial to me. Thank you.
And I don't think we've done a meal for them in a while. I don't know that we've ever done a meal. No, okay, never mind. Never mind. Okay. Here we go. Joe, go ahead.
So do we move to defer?
Yes, we need it as an action item. Thank you.
Next.
Table, table.
Move to table.
Second.
All right. Um, move by Joe. Joe, Joe, second by Rob. Um, and on a motion to table, we can't discuss it, right? So discussion's over. Okay. We'll learn. Any, no discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, no opposition. Thank y'all very much. We'll see you during the session. Okay.
All right.
Am I?
The next three items are all related for the same project, but they're three separate voting items. Um, back in the summer, the city council approved a right-of-way agreement with Brookfield for the Ashford Dunwoody path in front of the mall. Uh, now we're coming back for, um, the funding for construction. Um, the first item is an agree, a project agreement with perimeter C I D for the, that outlines who's responsible for what and how, you know, how the costs are divided up. Uh, Ted Reinhardt is here tonight from the C I D. This same agreement will be presented to their board this Wednesday uh, for approval. And so, um, it outlines both the right-of-way costs that had previously been agreed to, that documents that in writing as well as the construction funding. And if you look, the, the C I D, a lot of the costs are being split fifty-fifty, but the C I D is paying um, about twenty-five percent more for the right-of-way cost and uh, of more, a little more than half for the overall construction. And on the construction side, there they've agreed to pay for a lot of the aesthetics, they, uh, at some of the corners at the intersections where they have their, their rock walls and things. It's, um, they've incorporated pavers and some of those decorative elements into the design. So the second item is for, to the council to actually fund the author, uh, authorize the funding for the construction. It's already been budgeted. We're using one of our own call contractors uh, with their estimate, uh, is included in your agenda package. And so that would be authorize staff to go ahead and allocate and expend that funding for the project. And then the third is for the lighting agreement with Georgia Power. The, the light, a lot of the lights that are out there, there are already pedestrian lights out there, but a lot of them are in the way of the project. And so they'll be replaced with newer L E D lights uh, when the project's completed. And so the, there's a request there to approve the funding for the, uh, installation cost of uh, one hundred and forty thousand, seven sixty-nine, which would also be split fifty-fifty with the C I B.
Okay. If, if it's okay with council, you can probably ask questions on all three at once, rather than trying to keep up with which one. I'll start with you, Tom. Any questions, comments?
Um, no, no questions, Michael. Thank you. Uh, it's been a long time coming and I'm, I'm very excited to see this project finally moving forward. So, uh, thank you for your all, your hard work. Uh, appreciate the uh, partnership with the P C I D on this, uh, to helping to make this reality. So thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I have just one question on the, uh, the lighting agreement. So we're replacing some existing lights with more efficient lights. Is there a net savings for operating costs that we'll get? Is it about the same as before? Because maybe we have more lights now or how's it play out, I guess, to what we had before?
That's, that's a good question that I'm gonna, um, try to dive into the, our current bill. You know, there's thousands of streetlights across the city. Some of them are broken out and itemized separately, separately. Some of them are lumped together. So I have to try to get into the bill and see um, if I can isolate those costs or get them from Georgia Power, but, um, I, I will look into that.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I, I just, to my mind, it seems like it, the monthly cost may not necessarily be an increase of that amount. It might be some other numbers.
It should be, right. It shouldn't be, right.
Uh, thank you to Brookfield Properties and David Silver, general manager of the mall and that team and P C I Ds, of course, to make this come to fruition. My question is about the bus shelter. What is the plan for that? Is it gonna be bigger, artistic?
It's going to be, um, I could probably send you a picture of it. It will be, it will not have advertising on it and it will be, uh, in the style of this, of the C I D standards, which I'm not sure if there are any currently out there on the Dunwoody side, but it will be a, uh, nice, modern, non-add bus shelter. And I'll, I'll find a picture and send it to you all.
Okay, so we won't be deviating from P C I D standards, just to the whole areas in the same
Right.
configuration.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I'd love to see a picture. Thank you.
Stacy.
So I know we're all excited for this project to come to fruition. But let's define fruition. So assuming it's passed tonight, P C I D passes the funding on Wednesday. So assuming it's passed tonight, PCAD passes the funding on Wednesday, when am I gonna walk on it?
I, I knew somebody would ask.
No patience for utility relocation either.
Well, we don't have a, a lot of that on this project, but, so the, the reason we're bringing this tonight. Even back when we approved the right away agreement, we knew it would take some time to get that, that real estate closing done. And we weren't gonna be able to finish before the holiday shopping season, so we'd always, we intended to start in January. That's still our intention, a caveat that with. We are still waiting on Brookfield to send back the signed agreement that we had agreed to and just found out. Last week that the point person at Brookfield Corporate is no longer there as of last week, so. We're talking to the mall manager and trying to, and their attorney to find out where that agreement is, but that. That's really the only thing that is, could hold us up at this point.
Is Kathy still their attorney or they switched attorneys?
Yes, she is, and she. Did not, was not aware of this either until we, we heard it, so.
Joe, you think?
Yeah, I was gonna ask the timeline, when's the groundbreaking and when's the rimba cutting? Is it oak tree removal? I noticed that in, in a sentence embedded in there, are we gonna remove any of those really big, big oaks?
A few of them are being removed, but most of them are being saved, there were a few we, we really couldn't have waited.
Really, really? And, and we've worked with this contractor before, right?
Yes, yes.
I've seen him around there, so they're, they've got good creds and reliable and they're, they're available to work, they're not gonna be delayed. They've got the resources, if we, if we say go, they can, they can go.
Yes.
Yeah. All right.
John.
No questions, everything's been asked, thank you.
Asked but not answered, so if you start in January, what?
Summer.
Summer, okay.
Summer for completion or groundbreaking?
It's groundbreaking in January, completion over the summer.
All right.
Summer of twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three.
So, so I have a question, I have a question. The light poles that we're removing, they may not be the most modern and efficient, but could they be reused? Could it save us some money and put them in areas that we desperately need lights? Can you ask? I don't.
We can, we can ask, they'll, they'll be, they're green, well, we could probably get them painted even, but.
Well, they don't have to be in perimeter.
Right.
Oh, but they're green because of perimeter, we could probably paint them, or we could, if they're on a street with no lights, I'm not sure the color matters. Like, it's, if you're not, and actually, green and black match very nicely, but it doesn't matter. If they're on a street with no lights or they're not near other light poles, I think, I mean, I don't want them to look bad, but please find out.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, there may be cases where we could put, you know, one here or there, I don't, you know. Reusing them at like on a whole street, I don't think would save us much money because. You have to run all the power underground and everything to get to it, but we'll ask.
Ask, please, thank you, all right, any further discussion? Okay, so Sharon, I think you have to read each of these, did you already read the first one? Number eight. You may have.
I have not, but I will. Number eight is approval of a project agreement with the Perimeter Community Improvement District. For the Ashford Dunwoody Path Phase One Construction.
This is an action item.
Move to approve.
By Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom, any further discussion or questions? I have one really quick question. The money for this from hotel motel tax, is this, is this old hotel motel tax money?
Yes.
I saw, seeing this, what the, okay. Um, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, that passes unanimously?
One minute.
Right, that's fine.
One minute. Number nine is approval of funding authorization for construction of Ashford Dunwoody commuter trail phase one.
Move to approve.
Move by Rob.
Second.
I didn't hear who's, was, Tom, okay, there's a lot of action up here that shouldn't be happening. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that passes unanimously.
Number ten is approval of lighting agreement with Georgia Power for Ashford Dunwoody Path Phase One Streetlights.
Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Move by Rob.
Second.
Second by Stacy, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Woohoo, that passes unanimously, thank you, right, thank you, PCID. Thank you, PCID, okay.
The next item is approval of facility usage agreements with the Athletic Association Partners, Brent Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council, as discussed at the last council meeting, we have seven usage agreements with our athletic associations that provide. Three provide recreation programs as a recreation program provider, and the other four are school programs that we facilitate. At Brooklyn Park. The, one difference again between last year and this year is that we will be increasing the fee for tournaments. This is to hopefully increase the revenue that we generate off of our fields to go towards the sinking fund that y'all established tonight. So I'm here to answer any other additional questions you may have.
I'd like to make a motion that we remove the DSB usage agreement. And table it, so we can finalize.
Don't table, yeah, because then we can't talk about it.
Um, okay.
Sorry, okay, so, make a mo, I think we need a motion for the.
To just remove it.
Or just a mo, we need, um, yeah. Right, you could make a motion to pass and then amend the motion. So. We're failing Parliament too.
We're failing.
Let, let me help, so if there's a package on here, you can do a motion to approve everything but X. And table that item for a later meeting as one motion.
Just because we have these new rules we're operating under. If we make a motion, if she makes a motion and uses the word table, that ceases conversation on that item, correct?
So if you want to continue the conversation, you could do it multiple ways. The first thing is, like she, I think she started to do was to table a component of that item. And if that's agreed on, then you would have the remaining issues to decide how you wanna do a motion. Or you could have moved, approve all of them and amend it by taking out, I'm a little concerned about that, I'd prefer to do it that way.
Okay, so, but we can have, we're gonna have a discussion first, questions for Brent, starting at John. Anything?
No, no questions at the moment, but I'm interested to hear what's going on.
Brent, just confirm with me, what's in the packet today, have there been any edits or changes since the last?
No.
Thank you.
Stacy.
So, one thing that we've always talked about is the fact that we have no softball fields in the city and that. The girls are locked out of our Peachtree Fields. In, kind of brainstorming and thinking of what we can do, I approached some of the softball dads, and so what we would like to do is. Set aside and do a usage agreement with DHS Girl Softball or whatever their umbrella is called, or their nonprofit is called. Where they would have one field at Peachtree from four thirty to six thirty-ish, that, that's. One reason the details have been worked out, Monday through Thursday. When, and this is just from October through, or this is from August through mid-October. And then from mid-September on, when the Dunwoody High School Girls softball team has a game. They don't have lights, so they have to start at three o'clock in the afternoon in order to get it on, so we would then. Allow them to play their game under lights with bathrooms at the Peachtree Fields. So, I'm asking to table the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Usage Agreement so that it can be. Matched with the usage agreement that will be agreed to by softball. Again, this is ten weeks, it gives our Peachtree Middle School Girls a field. We have worked through the mound issue, we have money in the ARP Recreational Equity Budget Line item to buy equipment that we need. It seems to me like it's a win-win. Where, they are open to it, I know DSB has said they understand that and they are not opposed to it, is not strongly opposed to it. We'll phrase it that way, so I just feel like this gives us time to. Get a usage agreement so that girls softball can be played beginning next August at the Peachtree Fields.
We'll come back to that idea, Catherine, you have anything?
I'm fine with exploring the idea of girl softball, I definitely think that everybody needs a chance to provide some input. So I definitely like holding that off if we wanna propose that.
Okay, um, John.
I guess I'm okay with the idea of girl softball, I guess my only question is, is how do we? Why are we tabling only the Dunwoody Senior Baseball, why aren't we talking to all of our nonprofits that have space available or the, you know? Does it have to be at the, the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Field?
It has to be a baseball field.
It does.
Or a softball field, it has to be a diamond.
Okay.
I mean, I think, I mean.
Practice versus games, I'm trying to understand all the, I wanna make sure.
Yes, it has to be on a diamond field that is compatible for softball, which would be a baseball field, it's also the Peachtree Group Middle School Girls. So it's their school field as well.
Agreed, that's why I was hoping at some day we would, and also turf the football field, lacrosse field there. I guess, I'm just trying to understand all of the, the dynamics of it, is there any way to line any other field into a diamond? I mean, we've been talking about lining fields in the past, again, I'm not against the discussion, I just wanna make sure that we're talking to everybody, that we're looking at all options.
So this is a. Low hanging fruit. It is, it is eight hours a week for ten weeks. And, and it is, and is our, and is our fields and we can. Get everybody on the same page and how it can work together with logistics and fences and bases and mounds, so that's what we need the extra time for.
So I, I think that the challenge is, and for me personally, is, is that we are nowhere close to having a permanent equitable situation. It's not equitable to take a rectangular field, I mean, I'm not a softball parent, my children were not athletes, except for the ones that rode horses. But I don't think it's equitable to put a diamond in the middle of a football field and then say. It's the same, and I'm, I'm not criticizing the idea, I'm just saying that I'm worried that we continue, we certainly set ourselves up for criticism. Right, because we have a sport that's primarily paid by girls. We have no options for them on, in this particular sport, we can talk about rectangular fields for lacrosse and soccer and all that. But this, as I understand it, because I also wasn't a baseball parent, this is not the busy time of year for base, that age baseball either, correct, somebody?
That's correct, the spring league is definitely busier, we do have a very robust fall program too, but. And speaking with Dunwoody Senior Baseball, they are willing to work with the city to help.
We have other ideas that we're working on and towards, and so I think we view this as a short-term solution. Not, not a long-term solution, because it's still not particularly equitable. But we have to get there, and in the meantime, every season that we're not. Able to even say, we don't have anything that we could say today that we know we could do in August, we're just not there, maybe something will pop up. But that's sort of where this genesis of an idea came from, is we brainstormed, how do we serve? Girls who play softball in our community. And I don't think it's gonna cost very much, is it?
There will be some costs associated with it, the main cost will be re-lining of the turf field. We will have to do some base realignments, the bases that are currently at, the fields are much longer baselines. Softball is sixty feet, so we will have to potentially put in a new home plate. And new baselines and base plugs, so it won't be as expensive as building a new softball field, certainly. But there will be some costs associated with.
We were gonna spend four and a half million dollars to build two softball fields, so are you talking a million to do this?
That's what I'm saying, it, I mean, there will be some cost, it won't just be the mound and. We will have to cut the turf and put in new. Build, you know, baselines for softball.
And will we need to cut it if it was just for practice? I mean, I'm just asking, yes, okay.
I mean, it, it, it is, is more important for gameplay because it needs to be regulated, especially for safety, for practice. You know, I've seen kids practice softball on football fields with rubber mats.
Right.
Bases, so. It depends on how far we wanna modify the facility for the type of use that we might wanna offer to the school system. If we're looking at games, certainly we're gonna have to do it to a.
Right.
Regulated standard for gameplay.
And the thought was middle school girls would play their games there.
Okay, all right, so. I don't, I think that for tonight's purposes, what we're asking is, is to pull the DSB agreement. So we can at least further analyze this, go ahead, John.
I guess I'm just trying to think of the order in which we rent out our fields. How many different organizations play baseball, play on those fields? I mean, I remember, what's the traveling one that we made an agreement with?
Yeah, the, oh, it may be L, the men's.
Yeah, the men's traveling, do they have bumping rights, I mean, they're, they're an association that we've approved. Do they have the right to schedule before this organization that, that we're thinking about leasing them to?
So, the, right now, there's Dunwoody Senior Baseball and MABL are both have usage agreements for that field. And we work with both those organizations, once we open up the field for them to go in and put in their schedule. The way it works is we go in and we block out any times that the city needs to hold the bills, for example, for limited days. We block the fields of those, or if there's something we wanna do on the fields for maintenance or whatever. Once we've blocked out those dates in our system, we set a date for the associations to go in and put in their schedules. Once those schedules are in, we approve them and we some, send them the invoice for that.
So it's not only Dunwoody Senior Baseball, it's this other organization as well.
Yes, and, you know, they're, the times that softball's looking to use it would not be a time that MABL would be using it. So there's not much of a conflict between girls softball from Peachtree Middle and MABL.
I'm just trying to think of the other organizations to make sure there is no other conflicts.
Uh, question, what is gonna change of the DSB contract, should we figure out softball?
So, the way we've written our contracts is that, we have a, a statement in there and it's in section C. Of the obligations of the city, and basically what we state is the timeframe that. Any organization or association can get on the field, it's primarily driven by the. Land swap language that we put in the purchase and sell the property between us and DeKalb County Schools. Basically, we have access to our fields starting at four o'clock, Monday through Friday. And then, of course, Saturdays and Sundays all day, so what it states in our usage agreement is that Dunwoody Senior, MABL. Can access those fields after four PM, Monday through Friday, and can schedule whatever. We did insert the statement that the city will allocate scheduled time of facility based on the greatest programming need. And that's why we don't, they don't just automatically get to put in whatever they want and get it, they submit their schedule request, we approve it after we've blocked anything out. Uh, so, what I think. Councilman Harris would like to see is a. Statement in Dunwoody Senior Baseball that shows that they do not have access to the field from August to mid-October. For that specific timeframe, and then it would have one specific for that timeframe in the softball association's usage agreement. So it basically carves out that time from Dunwoody Senior Baseball, so it's. Depends on how council wants to proceed, and we can leave it as the kind of open statement that we have in our usage agreements where it's. You have access to the fields or you have access to request time after four PM, but your time is not approved. Until the city has reviewed it and allocated the time, depending on what we think is the greatest programming use. Or you put in more specific time blocks of what each organization will have during that timeframe.
What is your preference for contract language?
We'll just need to make sure that, because with. The way the fluidity of sports works, there may be times where the softball program plays in away game. And they may not be there on a Wednesday or Thursday, so that field, if we lock it in in their usage agreement. We, we had, we may need to put a statement into Dunwoody Senior Baseballs that says they don't have these times. To book in unless it's already approved by the city, so they can request it of us. And we can say, yes, softball has an away game or softballs aren't practicing, because from what I've heard from the softball program is they need it three to four days a week. They didn't tell me what days, they didn't say we, we practice Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, play on Thursday. They may practice Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and have a, a home or an away game on Tuesday. So it, you just don't know what that actual usage schedule is gonna be. What that actual usage schedule is going to be until the season is mapped out. Um, so I don't want to get into a situation where we have an empty field. That can be utilized because we've locked in specific times that another organization can't use it during that time. So I would want to make sure that if we caveat. A certain amount of time for softball, that there is some way that we can release that field to another, to another organization. If they're not going to be there using it.
So if I might suggest that we're not going to solve this up here tonight and that we let. Staff continue to hammer away at it. And work on it. So that, because I, I think that there's a lot of moving pieces. I think it would be nice that we understand a little bit about what it's going to cost, just. Sure. So, um, but that, but the rest of them. Aren't impacted as far as I can tell, but the rest of the user agreements aren't impacted by this solution. Or potential solution, so.
Ma- Madam Mayor, can I suggest some, i- if you decide to take the action that was discussed earlier? It's really a division of three motions. A motion to amend item eleven to vote separately on, I think it was Dunwoody Senior Baseball. Uh, uh, usage agreement to separate it out from item eleven, then a motion to approve, approve or disapprove or do table. Item eleven with the exception of Dunwoody Senior Baseball. And then three, a motion to table consideration, Dunwoody Senior Baseball Usage Agreement. I think you're going to need three motions to carry out what you're trying to do if you're going to divide item eleven. Unless you only approve the six and don't take up the seven. Is it seven?
That's the least.
You could table them all, sure. Yeah, you could table.
I, I will then make a motion that we approve the facility usage agreements, but that we remove the Dunwoody Sen- Senior Baseball Usage Agreement for separate consideration.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? On this motion as stated. Alright, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Next, Rob.
Uh, now I move.
You can ask the attorney for guidance.
I move to. I, I'm going to pause because if I use the word table, then we don't get to discuss the Dunwoody Senior Baseball.
Well, now that's the only thing on the agenda, unless, unless the chair decides to allow additional comment. If you move the table, it would not be discussed.
I, I do have one more question then before.
Right, we can continue the discussion, I believe.
Well, but if I move to.
Don't move to table. That's the end of it.
My, my question is more scheduling. When does Dunwoody Senior Baseball need to have their usage agreement set? When does, i- if we decide to move forward with the softball? When do they need to have, I mean, what kind of scheduling restrictions are we looking at? By looking at this usage agreement separately, that might interfere when, when they need to schedule and work out.
We're already scheduling into. You know, January through. Uh, I believe it's March, April of next year already.
But this goes into effect in August, correct?
The, so the, the softball, we wouldn't need to worry about that till August, but as far as not approving Dunwoody Seniors, it would need to be approved before the end of this year. Uh, so my goal would be to have something back to you guys by the December twelfth meeting.
And that's, that's, I just want to make sure, that's exactly the question. I wanted to make sure we're not messing up. Dunwoody Senior Baseball now by looking at something for the fall. So I appreciate that. Thank you. So then I will move to table the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Usage Agreement pending. Um, further discussion about usage of the fields for softball.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? That carries. Thank you. Brent.
Is there a motion to, to approve the other?
Wait, wait, did we?
I don't know that you did.
Was that what you did or you just removed it? Okay, except.
That we consider that one separately.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you. Alright, council, if you will humor me, because I don't know how long twelve is going to take. Can we move thirteen up before twelve? Do we need a motion to do that or I can just do it? I need a motion. Okay, just because they're, uh huh.
Sorry, point of order. I don't believe you've voted on those other two motions.
Wait a minute. I thought they were unanimous. We voted.
You did vote. I missed it somehow. Both of them you voted.
Yes, we voted. Rob, Rob, Rob moved. Right, you want to do it more time? Okay, come back.
But, Rob.
Rob, the first motion again.
My first motion was that we, um, remove the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Usage Agreement from the usage agreements and. Approve the remaining usage agreements.
And Stacy seconded. All in favor? Alright, second motion.
The second motion was to table the Dunwoody Senior Baseball Usage Agreement pending discussion with. Um, a softball organization, um, to determine usage of one of the fields.
Stacy, you just said. All in favor? That passes unanimously. Alright, so now could someone please make a motion to move thirteen up for, for twelve? So that the people from the Y M C A who've been sitting here can leave, because I don't know how long the technology one's going to take.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item number thirteen to before item number twelve.
Thank you.
Second.
Move by Tom, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously.
I just want to make sure you don't want to table the item now.
No.
Okay.
No, this is an easy one. Get.
Still, we can't talk about it.
We have gone through the second round of A R P grant applications and what you have before you is just like the previous time you're going to approve. Entities, we're going to negotiate with them as if they're like vendors with us and then work on the grants afterwards. And with tonight's item, you actually have, uh, four new agencies and two previous agencies. Community is assistant center and corners outreach were under the cares grant before. You have four new entities, the adult day of Dunwoody Foundation, Clubhouse, Emmanuel, uh, Clubhouse Atlanta, Temple Emmanuel for Backpack Buddies. And that's it. Okay, and the Y, the Y M C A. So, um, with this, we'll start the ball rolling immediately tomorrow on negotiations with them. I am not sure if we can bring you the items to approve at the next December meeting, but we're going to try to if we can.
Oh, this is an action item.
It is, but you have to approve the contract.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Does any, uh, I'm, does anybody have discussion or questions?
Yes, Stacy, Catherine, sorry. Backpack Buddies is being funded through J F C S and through.
Two different backpack buddy entities. Think of, think of them. I like to call them franchises in my head. So two different groups that are running at different schools.
Uh, Backpack Buddies is a five one C three located in Dunwoody. Is there no reason we are funding, aren't funding them directly?
Uh, yes, because we put stipulations on, they had to have financial statements for an audit. And so they are working through, uh, secondary entities working as financially responsible parties.
Thank you.
Done.
Um, thank you, Jake. Can you tell us about the funding mechanism in the sense of proving expenses and the clawback monies? We give them cash upfront. I guess explain to me how that's going to work for, I guess we haven't seen their applications yet, but I want to make sure that that's part of the discussion.
In all of the cases, we, uh, we are doing a little bit different from cares in that we're actually fronting a little of the money because cash flow became a problem with cares. However, what we're doing is putting in very strenuous quarterly reporting marks. And since they only get a fraction of their funding, they have to prove to us what they've spent it on before there is any more. So it's kind of a carrot reward. Program on it.
Alright, and those metrics will be part of council approval.
Uh, what we plan to do is the ones that finish December thirty first because they're so late, we don't plan to do nothing, um, much with that. But with the first quarter for next year, y'all will receive, here's what they've done, here's what they've spent. Thank you.
And, and I think John asked the question I was asking. He asked the financial side and the programmatic side, we will. He probably asked too. We'll receive reports on that as well. So like I read the Y M C A application, we're going to see how many children that. Under search children, they teach to swim.
It's, we, we plan to even in some cases, um, when you approve the contract last time, the scope of services was with them. Where you've also allowed staff to work one on one case it needs to be tweaked, but that will come back to you and I plan to have them do it in some type of formal reporting form.
Yeah.
Easier to read.
Yes, that would be awesome. Alright. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Says unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, now we have to go back to the. Right, now you can go home. Now we're back to twelve.
This is adoption of the technology policy. Ginger LaPage.
Hello. Um, so this is an action item tonight for the adoption of the attached technology policy for the city of Dunwoody effective immediately. Um, this technology policy would cover all major areas of the technical environment. It can be used as a stepping stone towards accreditation. Um, this version does include one update to page eighteen, section one B. We removed. Um, the phrasing city staff only. And it just says cell phones now, and that's per, um, Mr. Bernard's suggestion at the last meeting. Um, this I T policy is recommended by the city's insurance provider, legal team and the technology department. It was drafted to protect the organization, the employees and anyone that uses technology from, of, by, with the city. Um, it addresses forensic insurance and open records requirements. It was created using best practice and industry standards. And the training has been created for employees and department heads. It's ready to roll out as soon as the policy is approved. And, um, there is individual training for council and how you use the technology that's in the preparation phases as we speak. So if you have any questions, oh, and the request about know before reports, I have all of your know before reports ready to send to you guys as soon as, uh. We can get them to you.
Yeah, I'm a pretty bad manager with that stuff. I don't order emails. Um, questions, starting with Tom, anybody? Okay.
Just the observation that I will need to switch my text over to my city phone, um, and that may not occur today, but I'll do this quickly as I can.
Perhaps Mr. Bernard can explain how this is, reads differently, because I'm still reading it the same, even if you change the subtitle.
I, I don't have it in front of me, but the change that I mentioned to Ginger was it applies to everybody. To say only city staff would be incorrect if you're using whether it's council. A contracted employee or employee, doesn't matter. So I made it applicable or I've suggested making it applicable to everybody. Uh, based on the read that you have. So essentially that section somehow only applied to staff and it really applies to everybody.
Catherine, what page is it on? This is eighteen of the policy.
Ginger, is that the change?
Page eighteen, section one B specifically.
Right, and I think Councilman, Councilman Henning brought up last time, the problem is we're still going to have that our constituents have our. Private numbers and will be called on those numbers. And I recognize that this is just a policy, but we're going to be in a, between a rock and a hard place on this one, is what I think.
So, let, let me, uh, try to address that question. Because as I said before, it is going to require a change of behavior, but Eric and Ginger and I and others met. And what I suggested, and I think Ginger's agreed to do it, is I'm not a technology guru. I, I think there's a couple, or maybe all of y'all know more about technology than I do. I know my battery's about to die. But, um, I suggested individual training to talk about the apps, the contacts. The what's this and what's that? But whether you have this policy or not. Your stuff's available on the open record. This actually protects you, believe it or not. But it also protects the city from forensic. We had a forensic issue come up and this was highly suggested. We had our carrier say, y'all need this. And so I do know that it's not going to be perfect initially, because there's going to be a transition time. Ginger and her staff have agreed to meet individually with each of you to see how y'all integrate, interface your technology, what you use at home. What you use, if you got three phones or two or however, but I think, uh, Mr. Henning and. Mr. Secondary were showing me apps. Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I'm just not smart enough. But I think Ginger can address it and we, we understand it's going to take a minute. Uh, but whether you pass this policy or not. It's the law for the most part. Most of what in here i- is to protect you. The rest of it's to protect the city from liability and hacks and forensic issues. Uh, and I will tell you, when you have this policy, forget about the rewards that technology is going to get. It probably will affect your insurance rates on cyber issues and related matters. To the positive, meaning it'll be, you, by having the policy in place, you're probably going to save money in the long run.
We do recognize the value of the policy. Thank you.
Stacy, anybody? Joe? John?
Yeah, I'm going to approve, I'll vote for this. The problem is, is that any user that has a city issued mobile phone, that's not me. Should never use their personal phone for business, text, email, phone calls. Somebody's going to call me and I'm not going to know who the hell it is. I'm going to answer it. They're going to talk city business. Excuse me, please call my other phone. That I got somewhere else. I mean, it's just, it's, I'm saying I'm never going to do something when I'm not sure I'm. Never going to do something. I mean, I don't like lying and passing laws that really doesn't. Makes sense to me to a certain extent. Somebody's going to call me.
I wonder if. Because I, because I had that experience with the texts recently and four hours of my life, I'm never getting back and it could have been a lot worse if they'd asked for more. I wonder if the way to, and in my head I have a strategy, like I'm gonna. Send out my new contact information on the phone that sits in its box and dies because I haven't done anything with it. And then I charge it and rinse and repeat, but. The, I wonder if the way to handle it is, when you get those phone calls, is to say, give me a minute, I'll call you back from a new number. I mean, it's painful. But. I don't know, but.
I, I'm going to say something that sounds crazy because I tell my wife this all the time and I'm tied to a phone. I get it. I get five hundred emails a day. I, I can't, sometimes I can't shower in the morning because the phone's ringing off the hook. But the way to address it initially is don't answer the phone, leave a message. If it's city business, you need to call this number. And then you don't have to do anything. Uh, if it's a text, text from the city issued phone, if it's about whatever. I'm not saying that's very practical, uh, Councilman Henning. I, I, I understand the dilemma, especially somebody that's savvy like you and I'm not. But you're going to have to change the beha- your behavior if you approve this. You probably have to change it anyway, as best practices. But you have to change the behavior that people have access to your number and that takes a minute. And there are probably ways to do that through messaging, through voicemail. But if you pick up the phone every single time, you're going to run into the dilemma. So I'm not saying that's a perfect solution, sir. I, I get it completely.
Again, I, I want to comply. I try to do the best I can on open records. I, I copy myself into emails. When somebody were to send me something on a personal account, I will send it to myself. I will send it to council, but yet I'm part of council, so therefore. I'm sending it to myself. So if you want to do an open records, it's there.
But I still think they could ask like for Facebook Messenger, like I don't, I don't.
Again, there's, there's, there's so many different technical issues when it comes to social media and all the rest. It's. I'm going to vote to say yes to this. I'm going, I'm going to try real hard. But that being said, I think there's some flaws for. Us, as a new council member having a new phone and you never had mine, it gets easier as it goes on. So maybe I'm. Approving this not only for myself, but for the next council member that replaces me. So, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Rob.
So I, I, I think maybe something that might help. Uh, when we get our training is information perhaps on how to capture and record stuff that comes to our personal phone. Because if I don't answer the phone and somebody leaves me a voicemail, that voicemail is now a record. Hey, there's a real problem with X. I need to talk to you. If someone sends me a text and I respond to the text on a different phone, they have still texted my personal phone. I need to at least do a screen capture and save that. So I think that kind of information, I think will go a long way with. How do we handle stuff that comes to our personal phone? You know, we, the stuff we initiate, we can do from our city phones, but the stuff that comes into personal phones, how do we make sure we've captured that record adequately? And saved it on city servers so that if someone does do a records request, oh, the personal. Phone was called, this voicemail was left on this date, for example.
Ultimately, I think with this policy, and I, I hear, I hear the concerns, trust me, I, I get it completely. I think ultimately what we want to do is mo- remove the councilman, the councilwoman. The employees from making decisions about what's on their phone, whether it's public or private. In the long run, that will happen over a period of time. Judge, here's my phone. If it's government, here's my phone. Not. Mr. Councilman Price, you decide what's public and what's not if we didn't capture it. So we're trying to move to a system where we separate, we bifurcate you unfortunately. Initially, it will be a headache. Uh, there will be problems. And look, you always can revisit by amendment later as this thing plays itself out. We may learn stuff we don't know. And look, you always can revisit by amendment later as this thing plays itself out. We may learn stuff we don't know. That's why I suggested individual training because some of it depends on how you use the technology. And I think Ginger and them are willing to address those concerns, but if we see a recurring problem, we'll try to address it as we we go on. I'm not saying this is a fantasy of perfection. But I will say it's been over, it's been vetted hard by legal, forensic people, the insurance people, and Ginger and her team. And it's the best of an imperfect world right now that we have.
Well, I think we all agree that we need a technology policy. I think the issue we're struggling with is to make sure that we also comply with open records requirements that come in outside of our government-issued devices. And I don't think any of us have a problem doing that. We just want to make sure that that's somehow folded in.
So we can work on a standardization of that and and kind of teach that with the, when we're doing the policy training. We can make sure that there's something that we're suggesting. I mean, it'd be, you know, standardization suggestions in the interim until you get moved over to your business phone fully.
That's so the, just for you to understand, that's never happening for those of us who have used our personal number for, say, eleven years. It's never happening ever. Because unless I say to them, and I might decide to, you have to text this to me. Like I, Facebook Messenger for my mayor's account, it says, if you Facebook message me, it tells you how to email me. You don't, it's, I said, I don't answer here, email me. And so on my Messenger page, my personal Facebook Messenger doesn't give me that option. But but my point is, is it, is that unless we go hardcore and don't answer our phone, and we have friends who call us about city things and text us about city things as well as strangers. This is very challenging. And so I think that the policy you come up with is going to have to last forever. And when you run for office, you use a phone number, probably your home, your personal phone number. And then you become elected, and a lot of people have that number even if you get a city number. So just think about that as you're developing the policy, and this is an action item. Any other first questions, go ahead, John.
Just one final thing. I keep reading this over. Ginger, explain to me, what if I turn in my city cellphone? How does this affect me then at that point? But have you looked at the policy on compliance if we were to turn in our city phone? What happens then? I don't need to comply with this section?
So you're saying that if you went to using only your personal phone?
Right.
So you'd still be required by the Open Records Act, which I would, I would prefer if Sharon or Ken answered it because it is more of a legal versus a technology policy issue at that point. But at that point, you're still required to abide by the Open Records Act, even if.
I, I, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand the ins and outs of reading the policy, but yet looking at the unintended consequence. Not myself, but somebody might turn in their cellphone. What happens next? How does that, how does this policy affect that decision? I guess I'm just trying to think it through.
Well, if you use no city technology at all, then you can't violate the policy. But you still are subject, remember, you've got an oath of office.
Right.
You got the ethics issue. You've got a policy in place that you can't circumvent indirectly, and you got state laws to fall back. We, we want to remove, I'm going to tell you something you don't want to hear.
Okay.
As an elected person, you're never a private person twenty-four seven. That's just the way it is. It's, it's a challenge for people to run for office. It's a challenge for them to be in office. But the law doesn't distinguish you as John, the private person. You're a city councilman twenty-four seven. And so anything you do related to city business, you're subject to the Open Records Act, whether you're using city technology or not.
Right.
What I don't want to do, or what I would love to do for for y'all eventually is be in this position. Where we're not caught, because the data, there, there's a way forensically to get everything off your personal phone with the courts involved and AT&T and T-Mobile and all these other places. We don't want to put you in a position where you accidentally didn't think something was public.
Right.
It got found out through a third, a third way, and there's ways to do it when it's in the court, and then you committed a crime.
Right, I get it, I understand. I'm not just looking at it from every option. I'm not sure the technology policy forces me to own the city.
No, you don't have to have any technology. You can shut it all down and not have any, but your private computer that's used for public purposes. The contents on it may create a public record subject to disclosure. And we don't want you deciding for your own sake. I don't care if you decide. But we'd like to remove you from the equation where you have public stuff. And there's no mixing of the two because a judge one day might sort that out in a way that is not good for you. That's what we're concerned about. We're protecting you from yourself, trying to anyway.
You're like my wife. Thank you.
All right. This is an action item. Have we had a motion yet?
Move to approve.
Moved by Tom. Second. Second by Catherine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, me too. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance to amend chapter four, alcoholic beverages of the city of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances to amend alcohol licensing requirements for businesses and other purposes.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item is coming back to you. It was before your, sort of as a conceptual discussion item. Then in October was before your, as a discussion item, and now it's coming back as a sort of formal text amendment as as an action item. And as the first read today. I'll give an abbreviated version of this presentation that I've given before. And I'll focus on the slight changes that we made since, since I presented this to you, to your. This is regarding the alcohol requirements specifically for spirits, so for, for liquor-based drinks that right now require a full service kitchen and food sales of a minimum of sixty percent, so sixty percent food sales, forty percent alcohol sales of the total sales. We're bringing this because we, we've, we've received sort of requests from a variety of businesses that wanted to operate in the city of Dunwoody. So it's partially an economic development item, and it's partially sort of providing amenities to our residents. And first change here, I'll go over the changes individually, again, with the focus on the changes since the last meeting. We're proposing to change the sixty forty split for restaurants for eating establishment to a fifty fifty split, which is in line with the majority of our neighboring communities. We are creating, for the alcohol ordinance, we're creating two new use categories. One is personal improvement services, that is your barber, that is a fitness studio, and that's type of services of of that nature. And the second is entertainment and spectator sports. And that is, it could be a concert venue, that could be a mini golf venue, that could be something like that. Currently, these type of businesses can serve alcohol, but no liquor. And this would allow them to do this because this is a new proposal for Dunwoody. We're proposing several safeguards. One is there is still a primary purpose required. The sales there are at least fifty percent. So if I'm, like in the example the gentleman gave at the last meeting, if I'm a barber that wants to participate in this, I would have to have fifty percent of my sales from, from hair cutting in in addition to the alcohol sales. We have an earlier closing time of midnight. And again, those are the the requirements to make sure that this does not become sort of a nightlife destination. Say that this does not become bars, that this does not become a potential nuisance. And based on council commons, we had proposed this at the last meeting that both of these new categories would have to be in entertainment districts in the city. We're now proposing that the entertainment and spectator sports, because it's potentially the one that could come with more negative externalities for that to be started out in the entertainment districts. For the personal improvement services that are a bit safer in in that sense, for those to be citywide. And then the last safeguard that we have in there is that it's specifically excluding specific, potentially problematic users, users. And that examples are massage businesses and adult users. For all of those, because we had some discussion around the specific definitions of these categories. What we've done is we've sort of copy pasted the definitions from the zoning ordinance, which is essential for us because we approve sort of every single business for the business license. And we approve these based on the zoning ordinance to make sure that they can legally operate in, in that specific zoning district. And it makes it easy if all of these things line up, and it makes it hard if these things do not line up well. If something is a personal improvement service over here, it ideally is the same thing over in in this other ordinance. And it's complicated if these things conflict. So what we're proposing is to use the same language as in the zoning ordinance. And then one thing that is a change compared to the discussion item in October is that we're not proposing to change the regulations for hotels anymore. If you all remember, there was conversation around what's a nightclub, what's sort of this type of dancing that is, you know, on on this side of the line. What's that type of dancing that is on on that, on that side of the line? We do not think that hotels are like our current sort of main problem, and then the focus of this, we're proposing to take it out and then see if it becomes something that we want to tackle in in six months or a year, then we can bring it back. Then at the last meeting, I did not have maps for the entertainment districts. And again, this is for entertainment and spectator sports. We have two entertainment districts in the city, and this is just a reminder. On the left-hand side, you see the Dunwoody Village District. On the right-hand side, the Perimeter Center District. And with this, I'll conclude the presentation, and I'm ready for any questions you may have.
John, do you have any questions before you leave? Okay. Um, Tom, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. As I stated last time, I'm generally in favor of this, this ordinance. I think it's a good thing. Could you give a little more explanation on the, the, what was it, the sport, the entertainment and spectator sports? It seems like we're making it unnecessarily complicated to allow one anywhere and one only in entertainment districts. I may be missing something, but I don't necessarily see a concern with allowing that anywhere. So I guess I just, I just want a little bit more explanation on the justification of kind of separating those classifications.
Where we initially came from is to have a conservative approach to this, to have, to rather err on the side of having more safeguards than than the other way around. Generally, Dunwoody Village and Perimeter Center are the places in the city that have relatively robust police presence at at night. And those are the places where we have a bit more concentrated type nightlife users currently. So we propose to group these items in into those districts. Whether that sort of is, you know, if we want to go with a bit less conservative approach, we can certainly take this out as well.
I guess safer to start conservative if 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 the issue came up and a business wanted to go in an area that's not formidable by the, the proposed ordinance, we could always address it at that time. Okay, that's, I'm, I'm not really sure. I mean, I would hate to open up a, a can of worms that with unintended consequences. So perhaps the more conservative route at this point is safer because we could always amend it later. But first, but I'm, I'm also not seeing a major problem. So, but I guess I'll, for now, I'll leave it as is.
Rob.
I think I'm kind of the same mindset as you is, I don't know that we need to keep it to the entertainment districts, but I can appreciate starting carefully. I think I'd rather just see, is there at some time where we, we will intentionally revisit this so that if somebody say is thinking about doing something in Georgetown, they don't have to wait for an ordinance change. If after eighteen months of this being in place, we see, hey, it's working out really well, let's bring it out citywide. So I think that's just kind of a, a big picture preference I'm sharing is that rather than wait for someone to come, let's revisit this at some predetermined time after this is implemented to decide if it's worthwhile citywide.
Stacy.
I hear what you guys are saying, then I read the last paragraph with the calls to police department related to alcohol businesses with the public indecency, da, da, da. So I was like, okay, so I can see now why a little bit more conservative approach, like let's give it a go. But I also really like your idea of let's revisit it automatically in eighteen months or a certain timeframe. Just, I, yeah, great points.
Go ahead. Okay, so I have a couple of things, just so I make sure I understand. So right now, under this ordinance, if somebody just sells beer and wine and they're not in one of the two entertainment districts, what does this mean for them? Do they still have to meet the sixty forty?
So this just adds more options in in that sense. So
No.
if anyone can choose to do the things that are currently, none of those will be precluded. So if someone sells just beer and wine.
Yes.
They can continue to do that. They can continue to do that.
Does the, does the formula change for them if they're just beer and wine?
It, it, it does not. If they want to maintain sort of the, the option they have currently, they can continue to do that.
Okay, so if they're, I'm trying to make sure we're not compete, creating a competitive edge. That's what I'm trying to do. And I've had lots of concerns about this, so I understand if you want to, whatever. But if I own a restaurant that serves alcohol in Georgetown, am I, and we pass this for the entertainment district? Am I now as a business owner in Georgetown less competitive than the businesses in perimeter?
For, for the restaurants, all of the, the reporting requirement changes from sixty forty to fifty fifty throughout the city, so no change.
That changes for everybody. This has to do with if you're going to do putt putt with alcohol. Right now, you have to do it in one of the, under this ordinance, you'll do it in one of the entertainment districts.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, this is a first read. Anybody have anything else? Thank you. Getting there. Next. Yeah, while he's walking up here, would anyone like to make a motion?
But we have to let Carl show us pictures. We always like the pictures of.
See, I wasn't even going to pull the pictures up this time. If you want to see, I can pull them up.
We don't have balls.
You really don't have to. In the meantime, does anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Stacy. Catherine does. Do you want Councilor Lautenbacher to go ahead and ask her question? Okay.
Okay. So real briefly, this is a request for approval of a funding authorization, authorization of storm repairs at fifty-two fifty-two Troll Bridge Drive. I'll go through it real brief. The project will consist of repairs to a hundred and twenty-two feet of eighteen and thirty-six inch corrugated metal pipe, approximately the age is forty-seven years old. And the repairs will consist of twenty feet, twenty-foot deformed section that's separated. We're going to dig that out, and the rest will consist of curing and placed trenchless repair lining and replacement of a thirty-six inch brick head wall. The funding request is for eighty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-six cents. And if approved by council, the funding will be drawn from the American Rescue Plan budget allocated for storm management projects. And I will open it up for questions.
Anybody have questions, Catherine?
Yes. Since you've given us the date at which the sinkhole was reported, we're now looking at a two-year lag between reporting and repairing. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. Just to give you a just a brief background on the condition of the infrastructure in the city. Approximate age is actually about the age of this infrastructure. It's around 47 years old. A lot of the pipe infrastructure in the city that is corrugated metal pipe is in similar condition. I did a brief query in our GIS database. We have approximately right about 500 that are just in the right way alone in marginal or worse condition. A lot of that infrastructure, we're going to knock out using the ARPA money. But these particular jobs where they're off of the right way and they're just impacting a few property owners. We rate those projects and because of the because they're not in the right way and they're not impacting the whole public that are commuting down these roads. They're rated lower and they take a little bit longer to address. So the scoring on those projects, the longer they sit in the queue, the the score is is raised. So this particular project is closer to the top now because it's sat in the queue for a long time.
Is the property owner advised of the timeline?
Um, I have not, I I try not to commit to any specific timeline because a lot of the projects are depending on contractor availability. But I've been in communication with the homeowners and just let them know, you know, what was going on.
They would, they would know it'd be a while.
Yes, yes, yes.
So that cone on top of a piece of plywood doesn't look like it's a safe interim fix?
Well, in 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 most instances, what we typically do is we send our maintenance crews out there to stabilize their flowable field, patch the areas best best we can until we can go with a more permanent repair. So that's that's our typical procedure. So in that particular case, we will go in there, we patch the hole, patch that pipe as best we can. But in that particular instance, it was so far up the line. And because the pipe was separated, if we just pour flowable fill in the hole, it would just basically create a blockage and it would create even bigger issues. So that's the reason why we left that particular issue. As is so.
It just seems like a small child or deer hazard and that kind of thing.
It it it's it's definitely one of those situations where, you know, particularly in in the pipe infrastructure that's off the right away. In most instances, we can come up with a, you know, a temporary fix. But like I said, because it was a separation, we didn't just want to pour flowable fill in it and create a bigger issue backing up the water into the road.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm always last. Stretching again. So tonight I am to discuss here before you a to close out cap, a couple of cap for projects, reallocate funding. So within the memo for the agenda item, our first within our capital projects fund, Fund 350, we're closing out two projects and reallocating those funds to the two additional projects listed there within that exhibit. Within the SPOLOST fund, we are closing out a couple of projects and using the uncommitted SPOLOST dollars that we had allocated at the mid-year budget amendment that we did. And we are funding and again, we'll read through all the projects, but we're funding the projects identified on that list. So with that, we happy to answer any questions you may have.
So like old village run sidewalk, wasn't that done a while ago?
Yeah, and I knew you. I was hoping Michael would be here. I believe that's to I believe we went over budget slightly.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I was just curious.
An overrun, to true up the budget factors.
That's good.
Any, yeah, this is not a business item. Any further discussions? Go ahead, Joe.
Net gain or loss? Obviously negatives are in parentheses, pluses are not, right? So I'm just like, what's the net effect for these changes? Are we a plus or minus? Do we have surplus excess? Just what what is that?
So the net effect is zero to to both of them. We are allocating the pluses and the minuses equals zero.
Too late. All right, the left side and right side, left side and right side entries have to have to foot.
Okay, anybody else? This is, can we put this on consent? For the next meeting? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. There's Europe left. Eric.
Man, we do an executive session for litigation and actually according to the city attorney, we can actually hold that in here. We can return the camera. Go go dark on the camera and then we can hold it in here.
An interest of time, this can be short.
Okay. Turn off everything. Okay. Right, they'll do that when we get maybe. All right, we're not there yet. We have council comments. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, I just have one, one additional comment. And that is the the I just wanted to provide a very brief update on the citizen advisory capital improvements committee. That ed hot committee began meeting in September, citizen committee. That we had five meetings between then and now, where there was one additional meeting scheduled if needed. But the committee concluded its work, so we will be presenting a report to council at a future media council meeting, updating you on the recommendations that committee, when I say completed, there is a little asterisk there because the committee elected to table discussion on trail projects until after the PATH Foundation has completed the master trail plan. They just didn't believe they had enough information to effectively rank those projects. So that portion of the recommendations will be on hold, but the remainder is complete and look forward to presenting it to you.
Rob, you have anything?
Nothing, but thank you for the update on the capital projects.
I regret that I did not go earlier in the public comments when Tom did because I'm going to address the mission as it came up in public comment and Councilman Henigan has brought it up twice. So let me say this. The mission is what we do and the values are how we do it. The values that are in place for this city were written by Danny Ross and in place since 2008. I will read you the highlights. We will be ethical, professional, service oriented, fiscally responsible and transparent, organized, communicative, collaborative and progressive. I want to assure and reassure the citizenry that we continue to operate under these values as we have since inception.
Thank you. Stacy, anything? Joe, anything?
Well, just on a nice note, I had friends visiting here from Walnut Creek, California, and it's like a 180 because back when I was an advocate, I put a post on Henigan's blog in 2010. Could we have multi-use pass? And it's a picture of him and his wife walking there. Fast forward, I'm here walking through on Wednesday through Burke Run. Now I spent like two hours showing them everything in the history of, oh, by the way, and did you know about this and do you know about that? They were blown away and impressed absolutely every little thing, right? And I took them to the rooftop bar, ooh, ah, and they saw the skyline of downtown Dunwoody. That's where's downtown? So they talk about village. No, this is your downtown right here. Wow, look at that. And then we had, sorry, I've had Nova Caccino. They were blown away again. These are high end people. They've got like, you know, anyway, it's just, I'm just saying, right? The glasses have all be grateful, gratitude, thankful in life. You know, so there you go. Thank you.
Stacy.
Move to good. Oh, no, you're gonna comment.
I have no, I don't think I have a comment. I can't solve the deer problem very easily.
I said move to exit executive session for purposes of litigation.
Sorry. All right, so there's other, there's other cameras. We purchased other cameras. Yeah.
We got home, our plane was like, it was like 11:30 and it was like one o'clock before I could get upstairs.
Move to a drone?